Good evening, everyone. February 21st, 2023, at 6:00 P.M. Call for order. And please join me for the Pleasure Agenda.
The Pleasure Agenda is certified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robo-call, man clerk.
Supervisor Aliaga.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here. Treasurer Brown.
Here.
Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee Alamotu.
Here.
Trustee Ritchie.
Here.
And trustee Stoney.
Here. Okay. I need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended by adding item M1, closed session, to discuss a confidential legal opinion pursuant to the Michigan Open Meetings Act, MCL 15 dot 268H and MCL 15 dot 423 one G.
Support.
Okay, motion have made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. Board and public announcements. Any members of the board that would like to say a few words?
I would like to just take a moment to thank the children at the Children's Church Ministry at Oakland Woods Baptist Church that were nice enough to make all of us these beautiful Valentine's Day cards for all of the board members. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. Nice job. Any other board members? I have a couple announcements. One is we're gonna start that coffee with the supervisor, with something, something that I promise that I'm gonna do once a month, and it's starting on February, it's gonna be on Monday, 27, at eight in the morning, here in the township hall. Everybody's welcome, anybody that would like to share some concerns, anything that you think that you wanna share with the board, or something that we can do to help, I'll be here this Monday, 27, at eight in the morning, here in the township hall. And I wanna quick, make just a comment. You know, I was talking with a lot of people lately, and people brought to my attention to have some clarification about my position about what happened lately with the CBA board, about no resident. I do not have nothing personal about that no resident serving there, actually. I have to be honest, I think he's doing a good job, I think he's a good person, he carries himself really well, he's very professional, and he's well spoken. This is nothing personal between me and him, or nothing like that, it's about the idea, it's about the principle. The idea that most people, when I knocked their door during last summer, they don't like to have someone that don't live in the township making decisions or recommendations of the board. Nobody told me, hey, I want somebody that doesn't live in the township make recommendations for me. That's all it is, it's about the principle, it's not about the person. It's like, to give you an example, I mean, because it was brought to my attention before too, it's like having somebody that, that live maybe in Mexico, they would like to be in the, they like to be in the planning commission, and then we like to be a liaison in the CBA. It's also a no resident, and we prefer, I believe, and most of the people believe, we prefer to have, in the language, we just wanna change the language, that some of the members in the planning commission that would like to be the liaison in the CBA should be a resident, that's all it is. I don't have nothing personal about anybody in the CBA or the planning commission, because it's the truth. And I like to bring the facts, and I want to deliver my promise, what I promised people I will do, that's all it is. Any other public comment?
Just think, I just want to ask what your plan is with your coffee with the supervisor, since you're calling it coffee? Are you providing coffee, or they're gonna have to bring their own? Because we don't want anyone upset when they show up on a Monday morning.
Absolutely, that's a very good question, and thank you. Trustee Alamotu, I will provide coffee and some donuts, it's gonna be paid by my own pocket, I'm not using taxpayers' money for that. I believe that is a part of, you know, to keep in touch with the public. I think it's good, other township supervisors do that, like in Orion or other townships, it's a great idea to get input from the people. Not necessarily issues, sometimes you get some ideas, oh yeah, this is a great idea, I would like to bring that to the board. Because sometimes people are tired, you know, come from work, and they don't have time to come here to the board, and then maybe it's a time, different times that they can come, address to me, and you know? So it's very much to get that input of how we can work together with the community to improve, something if there's something that needs to be improved, I would like to hear from, you know, get some input. It did work for Orion, I was told, and I think they may, 100% is gonna work for the township. But yeah, the coffee is provided by me. Any other questions?
And donuts.
And donuts, yes. And donuts, yes.
Sure.
Yeah, donut, yes. And donuts, yeah. Okay, well, moving on. Public comments. Any individuals in the audience that may address to the township? Any comments? No for more than five minutes. Any item that is, doesn't appear in the agenda? Yes, please. Need to state your name and your address, please, if you can come to the podium?
Do I have to?
Yes. Sorry for the...
Derek, you want to bring the mic to her? Would that be easier?
Well, the camera.
Yeah, the camera is there, it's just you have to be there, the camera.
Takes me a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Hello. Tina Holland. What else do you need? My address?
Yes, please.
6292 Lake Walden Drive, Clarkston, Michigan. Anything else?
Nope.
I wanted to bring, first of all, thank you folks for being on the board and going through the stress, I understand a lot of things, I was the president of my home association on the board with the Republican Women's Group, everything. I'm very well-acknowledged with a master's degree in political science, law, and everything else, so what. Anyways, my concern, being a disabled victim with polio, I have also a grandson that has disabilities, as well as his friends. And I want to bring up the Sashaba Park, Sashaba Plains Park. And it's a dump, ladies and gentlemen. Nothing has been done, my taxes are going into that, as well as everything else, and I don't see anybody improving it for the last several years, why, I wanna know why it was not done. And I wanna know how much money would it cost to fix it up? But after six years, I'm sure you have X amount of money that could have been on the side to help that park. I wanna know why it's not done. And I also checked in, well, let me share with you, has anybody been to the park lately? Matt?
I've been there.
Nobody else?
Yes, I have.
Thank you.
Yes.
With that said, do you see anything that's enjoyable to go to that park? No. You got disabled children, I did talk to Derek, I called him up, and I just asked him, why hasn't that been improved? And he said he's doing his best. And I said, well, how many years have you been doing it? He said, six years. Well, what happened in those six years? And he said, I'm doing my best. And the more question I asked him, he said, I was berating him. I wasn't berating him, I do talk loud because I'm hard of hearing, and people with hearing problems usually talk a little loud. Okay, so I discussed things with him very pleasantly afterwards, and I didn't appreciate him. I finally, to be honest with you, when he kept saying, you're berating me, you're talking loud, blah, 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 I said, oh, grow up. I did, I told him that, because I don't like to be talked to like that. So, coming back, we need to get that park cleaned up. The bathrooms are atrocious, if you guys haven't been in the bathrooms, they're horrible. The playground needs upkeeping, we need some, we need some picnic tables, we need, I've got a list here that people have asked me to ask, you couldn't make it, but we need more handicap accessibility. Now, I called, I did call the disability rights supervisor, and I have a slew of numbers, and they said, if you ever wanna call him, you're most welcome to find out for yourselves. And they said that the head of, his name is, the building director that I should contact and ask question was David Moran and a Brian Upma. And I will do that, because I wanna see that park updated. You don't mind, Ronald, right? Are you interested in that? Would you do it?
I'm very interested in it.
Good.
I guess I was thinking myself, the last few meetings we've had, this discussion multiple times about Sashaba Plains Park, so...
And what have you done about it?
Well, we did budget money, and Derek did give a presentation about many items that he's updating this year for that park as well.
Like what?
Well, like improving the, well, the brush, the overall aesthetics of it, but also putting like new barbecue grills in, new, I think repaired to the...
Have you been in the bathrooms?
The bathrooms are on the agenda tonight, actually, for funding.
Thank you. And then as far as any kind of, especially with, I want it enjoyable where people can come in and have picnics and enjoy, like you've done the other parks, which look really nice. A lot of money was focused on those parks.
I just wanted to point out?
Yes, Paul?
He's responsible for those other parks, too.
Who is?
Derek. So I just, I just, I think, I think, I understand you don't like what that park looks at, but you're calling out the employee who actually made all the other...
Because I said, Paul, I said I talked to him, and he shared his side of the story.
Right. I'll let you finish, then I'll speak when it, so I don't get interrupted.
That's okay, I'm, we're talking here, I mean, let's get it out. No offense here, I hope not there. Because, Paul, I helped you out on your campaign issue now. Okay. So anyways, I wanna hear, you know, how much money are you allowed to fix up that park? How much money are we looking at? Because we're voters that, you took taxes out of us.
You need to wrap it up because of time.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Get, I understand, you finished?
No, I wasn't, but you're the one that...
No, it's just, no, it's just maybe because timing, it's five minutes.
Okay.
I give, it's okay, I wanna give you extra minutes, so you can, I give you extra minutes so you can finish your...
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. So I would like to see a little bit more, say, oh, one incident, and Derek and I, we talked about the gate. Had, I had a problem trying to get into, because I can't walk, as you can see, unfortunately. And it was told that it's closed, because, you know, baseballs, the cars, if you put them up closer, blah, blah, blah. And I said, well, you have a handicap, sign that says access. Well, they wouldn't let me through, so I had to come over here, discuss to them, I had the on-the-phone disability lawyer, and on the phone, I said, would you like to talk? There was a young lady, beautiful lady, and she said, no, no. And so they finally, after checking things out, they allowed me the next day to go to one of the games of my grandson. So Derek has said, I don't think there's a sign there, and so I said, I have pictures. I have, I took pictures because the disability rights said, Tina, go over there, because we have more problems with parks, that they don't really know the rules for disability. People are, they don't understand it, and they, I have a phone number here and a name, if all of you would like it. I told Jose I'll give it to him, and you'll can, she'll come here and speak as well, so you know what's going on with, with the Disability Act, and what you need for these parks. Okay? I don't want to see anybody...
Thank you, Tina. Can I, can I...
Sure, sure, trustee Stoney.
So for the sake of openness and transparency, I asked the same question the first meeting that we had in January, when the master plan was being presented to us, why is Sashaba Plains Park seemingly being neglected, when it feels like it's the park that needs the most attention? And the response is that we're intentionally putting it off, because we don't wanna put money into fixing or improving a park that we plan to possibly change in the future.
And what's the change?
Oh, listen, I just wanna bring something. First of all, thank you for coming, I know, you know, you're taking your time to come here and address an issue, and it's a concern for all of us, and trust me, we're working on it. Just so you know, last week, we were working actually about Sashaba Plains, we have a meeting with Derek and the two elected officials, to see what we're gonna do to improve. Today, in today's package, everything is about the parks. Today, the board is gonna be talking about the parks. And Derek is allocating right now money for the bathrooms and Sashaba Plains right now, and Bay Court. So, just so you know, and I'm aware, during the campaign season, I talked to everybody that live near, really near to Sashaba Plains. I went to Sashaba Plains with Treasurer Brown, we shared the same concerns. Derek already allocated money for the new grills, right, Derek?
Already sitting in the garage waiting to be installed.
Right. We already talked about, we may involve, we're looking to see if we get even, it was talking, some sectors that would like to come and help us out, too. So we're looking different ideas right now, but we, I'm working on it right now. And this package, like I says, it has already money coming there. Now, actually, I talked to Lisa Christensen last week, because she's very involved about your concern about, you know, have valid access.
A lot of people are concerned.
Yeah. And Lisa and I, we talked about it, and we're gonna, I will follow up this week with Derek, hopefully tomorrow, and we talk about how we can improve the access, and everything need to be improved.
Well, the ball, you know, the diamond section where they play baseball, needs to be smoothed out as well, but you guys will, I trust that you will, I mean, now that it's been brought up, it's been six years, there was money in the bank, I understand, but it was used for other facilities or other things, and the heck with Sashaba, so that's it.
No, I mean, do you...
Hold on, you, we were never, we never got an answer as far as why it got the way it was, why it was neglected intentionally.
Sure.
We're only saying what we're doing now that it has been neglected for so long.
Right, no.
We were never told. Feel like she deserves an answer.
No, well, listen, listen.
Let's go forward, let's forget about the past, now let's go forward.
I will go forward, but I, just keep in mind, I got elected on, I mean, I took office on November 23rd. The first thing I did is called Derek, Derek come to my office on this, on November 23rd, and the first thing we talked about Sashaba Plains and all the parks.
Well, you and I talked, excuse me, you and I talked about it way before he became supervisor, that it was a concern, because the voters were talking to me about it, because I'm really involved in different things, but, okay, well, somebody else wants to talk.
No, but Tina, just so you know, this package for tonight, everything is about the parks. And this is a hard work and dedication, they involve some of the trustees here, we work, I'm working on it. Everything here is about the parks, and I want the people to know, everything here is about the parks. What I want from Independence Township is to have the best parks in Oakland County, and I'm gonna deliver that. And I'm gonna, I'm pretty sure I have the support of everyone here tonight, so...
Okay.
I'll, I'll keep you updated.
I don't want any more businesses, please, for right now.
No, 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 I, I'm working on the parks, I'm working on the parks.
Can't they raise our taxes, people are gonna run out.
So, for the last month, that this seemed, it seemed like the plan has been changing, but what has been the plan for the last few years?
Well, sure.
I feel like we should say that openly, it was already discussed in January.
Derek, if you don't mind, because, good question.
For the first couple of years that I was here, we just operated the park as status quo, which was in better shape than what we had seen last summer. Now, and I believe that we talked about this before, the Miracle League field that is currently the North Oakland Miracle League field that is in Orion Township, I actually applied for the application for that ball field, and that ball field was slated to be built at Sashaba Plains. Now, after meeting with, we had some public input from the users of our TR softball programs, and they did not want the ball field at Sashaba Plains, they wanted it at Clintonwood Park. And we just did not have the room at Clintonwood Park to be able to squeeze it in there, we had a wetland delineation study done, where we thought the ball field might be able to fit at Clintonwood, and it just wasn't feasible. So, Sashaba Plains wasn't good enough, so we teamed up with Orion Township and moved the field over to Orion Township, which at that time, just kinda like where we are now, is we didn't wanna sink a bunch of money into a park that we were gonna completely wipe the canvas clean and start over from scratch. It just didn't seem very responsible of us to spend taxpayer money on a park facility to, the next year later, tear it all out and build something else there. So, when that idea kinda came and went, we were hit with the pandemic. And when the pandemic hit, we lost a full-time employee in my park division, and it was very hard to get part-time staff, we still struggle with getting staff to come and work in our parks. We have part jobs from 15 to 17 bucks an hour, and kids can work at Taco Bell for 13 to 15 bucks an hour, so they choose to go work at Taco Bell. We have a problem getting people that wanna put in a hard day's work in our maintenance field, it's not just us, it's our Safety Path Division has a hard time getting part-time employees, it's across the board. So, we had an opportunity recently to apply for a couple of Spark grants, to replace the playground and to replace the bathroom facility, and we also put those on hold, because we had another big project going on, where the DNR frowns very strongly on receiving grant monies, building new restroom facilities, and putting in new playgrounds, and then a year later, tearing them out. So, we've had a lot of discussions about the park, and one being that the park is very poorly designed, and especially very poorly designed from an ADA perspective. Parking lot is in front, all the amenities are in the back. This is not the way that parks are designed in 2023. It's not designed very well from a pedestrian, from a pedestrian standpoint, it's not very well-designed from a vehicular standpoint. So, we're kinda stuck with the format in which it is currently. Now, I can tell you, just this winter, we have gone in and spent several weeks cleaning the fence line out of all the brush, we've trimmed all the trees up, we have three quotes right now to remove 20 dead trees within the park, the brush pile has been removed, we have a plan in the spring to power wash and restain the pavilion. The bathrooms, as you both noted tonight, we have money set aside in our CIP reprogramming, our capital improvement program, reprogramming to fix the bathrooms, we know that both of the doors need to be replaced, the handles need to be replaced, the trim is falling apart, and we understand it's, I came in, when I came in here, I told our park staff verbatim, people only treat things as nice as they appear. And if it doesn't look like Disneyland, then they don't treat it like Disneyland. It needs to be, everything needs to be edged, and everything needs to be prim and proper, and people will treat it nicer if it looks nicer. In Sashaba Plains, yes, I'm not gonna stand here and tell you that it hasn't been neglected, because it has. And not for six years, it's been neglected for last summer, when we just didn't have the staff to keep up with the demand of the maintenance in our parks.
It's not true. It's absolutely not true.
We, every other year, it is programmed to put new mulch under the playground, every other year, it is programmed to put money into that facility, we've already received quotes for stripping both of the baseball fields down and having them resurfaced, it's just a matter of timing and strategy, and we haven't had the right strategy in place. I also want to mention that we tore out all the material under the playground, not even a month ago, all the mulch, all the weeds, everything up to the border has been torn out, and we already have a train of mulch that is coming in to do all of our playgrounds this spring. So we are working on it. Now, yes, did the other parks get more attention? I put a capital improvement program in front of our board for the last six years, and they've all voted yes on the plans that I've presented them. In the way, and I think, you know, I think Paul had mentioned this, is we noticed that we had two signature parks when I got here, that were in just as bad a shape as Sashaba Plains when I got here. The user-ship of this community, we have tens of thousands of people that visit the other two parks. Every summer, they're busy, they have a ton of amenities, and those amenities were failing, spray parks, bathrooms, historic buildings. It was, frankly, when I got here, yeah, it was all going downhill. And we've done to the best of our ability with the money that I get provided every year in that capital improvement program, which is only $300,000. Now, mind you, we have not written a grant here since 1992. I had to mitigate a conversion at our Bay Court Park, we had a pump station built there for our DPW department on state property, Bay Court Park is owned in perpetuity by the state of Michigan, and in order for me to write grants to double my money of that 300,000, I had to mitigate that pump station before I could get back into the trust fund and back into the land water conservation fund, to be able to double my money through that CIP program, to do even more for this community. And yes, it takes time, it does take time. So we're working on it, and we're doing the best that we can. And also, I found out today from my staff, who didn't tell me, but our therapeutic rec softball program will be playing at Clintonwood Park this summer on field number one. Plenty of handicap spaces right there for everyone to be able to access the field from an asphalt parking lot to the ball diamond. Our soccer field, where we play our TR soccer at Sashaba Plains, that soccer field has been moved up to the front of the park, so it's closer to the ADA accessible walkway at the west end of that parking lot. So yes, we're already making changes and trying to accommodate these programs the best that we can. So, if I could ask for just a little bit more patience, you are gonna see an amazing difference at that park, just this spring.
You still haven't answered the reason for the last couple of years that it's been intentionally neglected.
Yes, I agree with you. Is that 300,000 you get, it's been six years?
Yep.
Add that up, so where did all that go, there's the rest?
And like I said...
No, as, as far as where the money went, that's a different story. The reason that it's been intentionally neglected, I feel like I'm wondering why it's not being openly spoken about.
I, I don't think that it's been intentionally neglected.
It has been, you said it has been. You said that you don't wanna, let me, let me just say this.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We have an employee up here, and you're getting into his performance, you can't do that in public.
It's not about his performance.
I'm sorry, you can't...
I'm not saying that he's doing a bad job, I'm saying the plan.
I'm very uncomfortable.
He has the floor, but he has the floor, though.
You can't go after the employee, I'm not gonna sit here and have him go after our employees. If you're not defending him, I'm gonna...
I know they're defending anybody, Paul, but hold up, guy, please, please. Trustee Stoney, you have the floor, but please, be careful.
Yeah, nothing, nothing against you personally, I'm talking about the plan.
It's not personal?
Order, please.
I'm talking about the plan.
I can tell you that that plan has been approved by a business board.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, all right. Derek, let him finish, trustee Stoney.
The, I want it to be said, what was said on January 10th, when I asked, why are we intentionally putting it off? You gave a very detailed response of what we've been trying to do for the last couple of years, and you're not saying what that is.
Okay. He's referring to the soccer...
The private investment for a huge building to go there in place, instead of a park. Instead of an open park, we wanna put up a huge building for a private investment.
That was not my intention, that was a business proposal that was presented to the township.
Regardless of the, whose proposal was, that's been the plan, that's why we haven't been fixing the park, that's why we haven't been investing in it, because we're planning on giving away our open park land for a huge building for a private investment. And I don't know why that's not being discussed.
I think that's totally false.
That, that was, you can go watch the video on January 10th, where we've been kicking around several ideas for the last couple of years, some of them have fell apart, that one was a soccer dome that you wanted to put up there, but that plan fell through, now we're currently working with somebody else from the private sector to invest, again, somebody else.
Well, you know, if you put businesses there, you're gonna get a lot of people upset you, because taxes, you're gonna have to tax us.
All right. Listen, listen, Derek.
No.
Hold on. In my experience, when I, before I got in office during the last summer, I saw that Sashaba Plains was neglected, it doesn't looks good. When I got elected, the first thing I did, that after I got elected, I invited Treasurer Brown to go there and check it out and see what we can do, remember that? We went there. Since I took office, November 23rd, I sit with Director Derek Smith, and we put together some ideas, a workout. I'm in office just three, November, well, December, January, February, and now, three months, and I already bring a package to fix some of the parks, I'm working on it right now. I'm gonna sit with Derek, if we can meet tomorrow morning in my office, and we're gonna address this, and we're gonna give you an update soon to the public, okay? What are we gonna do? Sounds good? We're working on it anyways, I'm working on it. All right?
Okay.
I mean, I cannot tell you about the past, because, I mean, we, I...
You can tell about the current plan.
The current plan, yeah, I worked, well, I mean, right now, I have the package ready in front of you guys, it's involved some funding, so, it's involving some, yes.
But I've noticed businesses, 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 and I understand there's a few that wanna put more business in here. No, I mean, I can't even get out of my doggone entrance because of the schools, and we got all the township going, you know, all these townhouses going in there, and then I, medical, medical up the wazoo, we've got realtor up the wazoo, I mean, I understand progress, I get that. Okay, but I don't want anymore, I don't think anybody else wants more businesses in here.
Okay. Well, like, like, Tina, before I, Tina, I hear your, I hear you, I know what you want, keep in mind, I talk...
That's me. That's me.
No, I know, I talked to a lot of people in that subdivision across the street, and they told me they feel the same like you, they want to improve the park. We trimmed the trees right now, we already did that, right? All that, the trees around there, we take care of it. We're going to put new grills, we have in this package, we're going to fix the bathrooms, right? Isn't the package for the bathrooms? It's everything there, I'm right now. Like I says, I mean, it's already in the package, right here. We're working on it, and I still can improve it.
Honestly, if I can, I, I think this is a great problem to have, because I'm actually, for the first time that I've been here, we're getting public support of our park system. I mean, we have been, honestly, we've been approving these capital improvement projects and plans for six years, and nobody's ever shown up to say anything about any of them. So for me, this is, this is a positive result, we need voices in this community to speak up and tell us what they want. This is what we tried to achieve with our master plan, but we didn't get a lot of people to stand up and tell us what we wanted.
Sure.
I just have a suggestion. First of all, you cannot blame the pandemic, they ended up losing money, we weren't having kids pay these fees to play any sports, you were shut down for two years. So that's number one. Number two, being that it is on our agenda to talk about, I say we table this, and if you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting and actually hear the plan, but to go through it twice, I think is unnecessary. Let's please get back to our agenda, and you can hear about the plans for the park.
Okay. Trasho Brown?
So, you know, I apologize, Trustee Stoney, my, my, my problem is simply one of the language. Because for me, when I hear intentional neglect, it makes it sound, for me, my perception is that it makes it sound like our park people are doing something wrong. That's why I, that's why I reacted the way that I did, and so I apologize if it came across wrong. And I don't believe that was your intent at all. But for me, that's how it was coming across, with people who don't know. And I think I understand what your point was, and it's about talking to people about doing a public-private partnership on that property, and I was involved in a meeting with that. And I don't, I mean, I don't think that's going to happen, I don't think it's going to happen. I'm happy to talk about that at the appropriate time, but I don't know that it's in public comment. So I did react quickly to that, but it's only because people hearing what we say, intentional neglect, it sounds like someone's doing something bad intentionally, and that would never be the case. If you look at the great parks we have, certainly that park has become not well-kept, and there are reasons that it happened, but the same intentional neglect caught me as a bad way to put it, and so I apologize for reacting the way I did.
All right.
Can I say something?
Trusty Maroc. I still have the floor, I've been interrupted by the audience. Trying to not do that, because when we do that, that's when chaos ensues, because we don't listen to each other.
I listen to you, Paul.
Please.
I know you, Paul.
Please, okay, Paul.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Because it's important to understand, I, like I said, I wanted to give my apology to Trustee Stoney, but I want him to understand why I reacted, because there's a perception out there that he didn't intend, I know he didn't, because I could understand where he was going, and, but it can, it can look bad on our employees, and we never want to do that, not in public, for sure. So, that was all.
Okay. Trusty Morocco?
Okay, just briefly. I stayed quiet throughout this, which is unusual. I agree with what Matt said, when, and when he got on board, I was a new trustee, we did have a long discussion with Derek publicly, that one of the reasons that we weren't investing in it was because there were viable partnership and private business options, the soccer field dome, things from other, other places that were being discussed prior to Mr. Aliaga taking office, this is with the last supervisor. So I also had that impression, and when you say intentionally neglected, it's not intentionally neglected personally, it's, the intention was to not make an investment in the park, is what I understood over the last couple of years, until we came to a conclusion whether we were comfortable going into a partnership with a other company on that property, which would then delineate any investment we put in it, or not. We seem to have come to the conclusion recently in conversations I have, that that seems to be a less viable option right now, which is why, since Mr. Aliaga took office, every time the parks come up, it's about Sashawal Plains. Nobody has put more emphasis on fixing Sashawal Plains, other than Matt, who has recently got on the board. In my opinion, we've come to the conclusion that we're probably not going to do a partnership, and now we're going to take over Sashawal Plains and start investing in it again, and that's why I've been, talked to Derek many times, it's on the agenda tonight, the bathrooms, the grills, I think he's genuine about it, and, and it was under his last administration, with the possibility of a joint venture, which I would agree with. I wouldn't want to be dumping tons of money into a park that we potentially are in negotiations with, or talking about doing something totally different. And I think that's where the intentional neglect was to not waste money until we knew what we were doing. Unfortunately, that dragged on, the park became even more neglected, it's identified, Jose and Matt have put a ton of emphasis on it, and I'm excited about moving forward with it tonight, because he's going to, you know, we're going to start approving investments in it tonight, moving forward. So that's my take on what I got out of the whole thing.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Hopefully that's somewhat accurate.
Please, members of the public, I mean, it's, I don't know, but I want to say one more thing. I got elected on, you know, on November 23rd, and the reason I say this again is, the only thing I do every week is talk to Derek for updates, what we're doing every week. It's like, we talk every week, what is the step one, two, and three, with the three parks, and we're working on it, actually. So I want you to know, because I know hard and tough decisions have to be made, I won't hesitate to make those decisions, to make sure our parks is good, the standards are going to be the best parts in North Oakland County. So I want to finish with the remarks, because I intend to do that. Okay? Now, any other comments?
I want to say one last thing. I intentionally, like, does sound very harsh, and it was part of the plan, but it just felt disingenuous to say they were not fixing it up because of manpower, and not to say anything about, because we're holding off for a possible investment. That, that felt very disingenuous.
All right. Okay, sure.
Hi, I'm Vincent Bizon, 9725 Foster Road, Clarkston. I have a question, and I'm not sure I have my facts right, but I thought that the board voted not to have a member of, is it on the planning board, from outside the township? Is that what we, did we vote that, or?
No, I think you're talking about the language for the CBA. So we have a planning commission, and we have currently one non-resident, someone who doesn't live in the township.
Right, it's the planning commission, okay.
And that person also serves in the CBA, as a liaison. What happened in the past is, oh, we didn't, we didn't have a language that actually prevented. So that's why we have a non-resident also in the planning commission and the CBA. What I recommend is to the planning commission to change the language, just to add, the non-residents should be in the planning commission as a liaison of the planning commission on the CBA.
Okay.
So right now, I think it's, they table it, right? Ron, you can-
Yeah.
I'd say at the last meeting, there was some discussion, but there was also, I think we wanted to have a, have, put on the agenda, the next agenda again, to re-bring it up and discuss it.
Yeah.
Seems like there was some information we're going to get as well.
Yeah.
Is the planning committee an independent body?
Recommending body.
Or does it report to the board?
Recommending.
It does report to you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you could change the rules if you will, as to how that planning committee works, and whose staff sits, and all that sort of thing?
Actually, that question will be for Dan Kelly, I think, Dan Kelly.
Well, what does he want to know?
He wants to know if the board can change the rules about the planning commission with the CBA.
In what respect? Maybe we can talk offline.
That'd be fine, okay, thank you. Oh, I just, the other thing I wanted to say was, Jose, I saw that you're opening up your office to people coming in and complaining, the complaint department. I think that's great, you're going to get a lot of-
Praise, it's a praise, it's a praise coffee, they're going to come here and praise us at coffee, not complain.
Go hold your breath.
Yes, yes.
Tough crowd.
Yeah. Okay, we're moving on. Any other comments from more members? All right. We don't have a public hearing, presentation of reports, no. Postponed agendas, no. I have the consent agenda. Consent agenda, number one, request to approve the board of trustees' regular meetings minutes of February 7, 2023. Request to approve the February 14, 2023, check run of $500,825.40, and ratify the February 3, 2023 payroll of $292,312.64, and the January 2023 wire EFT transfer activity Request to approve the Information Technology Oversight Committee, ITOC, amend by laws by Brian Ogman, and request to approve the Brady Lodge rental and alcohol Morocco decker, May 13, 2023. Number five, request to appoint board and committee members senior community center advisory committee. Number six, request to accept the 2023 fireworks bid independence fest. Number seven, request to accept memorandum of agreement 2023, case of Clarkston. Number eight, request to ratify the PY 2023 smart specialized services, third-party contract. And I need a motion for the consent agenda.
I need a motion to approve the-
All right, Sam. I wanted to get some clarity on one item, if I can.
Sure.
Derek, on the fireworks, so, we have options-
Excuse me, we have to pull that and put it in business for discussion.
Oh, okay.
So we have to pull that and-
Okay.
Done the agenda.
We need to amend the agenda for that. Do you want to do that?
Well, it doesn't, it has two options, and it doesn't, it didn't say which one you picked, and I was just going to inquire, on the fireworks, just like-
No, we need to, hold on, we need to move it to business, to discuss. So you want me to move it to business to discuss, or?
No, you do.
Okay, let's do that. We have to amend, let's amend the agenda, and we're going to move iron number six, and we're going to put it at number five? That's okay?
I'll be next, under K. Items removed from consent agenda.
Yeah, item removed, oh, remove consent agenda, you're right, thank you.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the amendment of item six, move to item K, items removed from agenda.
Okay, all those, a second, okay? Motion have made, and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, let's talk, iron key, number six.
No, we need to make a motion to approve the consent.
Consent, okay, we need to make a, the motion have made, though.
No, that was just to move it.
To move it, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Kerry, thank you, Kerry. Okay. All right, so now, we're going to, item removed for consent agenda.
Did you read numbers seven and eight?
Yes, he did.
He did? Okay, sorry.
Now you can talk about-
Now we can talk, Sam. So Derek, can you come to the podium? Trustee Morocco have questions about iron six.
So we don't vote on the other ones first?
We just voted on it.
We just did.
On the other, all right, I'm just lost track of where you guys were at.
We pulled it out, and then we voted on it, so now we're on-
Next time, I'll pull it out in the beginning of the meeting, so we'll tell you I have a question on something. And Derek, I was just, I didn't realize that's a big deal, I just, the fireworks proposal came, you know, we got a $25,000 cap, and it came with proposal A and proposal B from the person that you're, that we're, we're talking about awarding-
That is correct.
-the bill, and I just wasn't clear on whether we were doing a ground show with option B, or just an aerial show, option A, because they gave us both, and only because I'm not an expert in pyrotechnics, and the only reason it comes up is that the option A without the ground show has 3,218 shots of fireworks, and when you do the ground show, it only has 2,135, and I went through all of the contract, and I couldn't, it's not really clear what the difference is in it, and they've been doing this since, I think it's said in the package, since the 90s for us, the same company, so we're very, you know, familiar with this, and I just didn't know if we were, what the status quo was from other years, if it was A or B, or, because it's a thousand, you know, it's a thousand less shots, but that doesn't mean it's not substituted with something else, and I just didn't know what the difference was between the two.
Well, we've been trying to get away from the ground show, what the ground show is, is it shoots off a lower projectile, you get more of them because they're less expensive.
Yeah.
But because of the visual area of where we host the fireworks, I kind of wanted to get into more of the aerial show and less of the ground show. Now, we're actually back at Clinton Wood Park, which is nice, and most of the show is visible, all the show is visible from people that are sitting on the ballfields or on the soccer fields, they get front row seats. But some of those ground show fireworks are a little bit too close for comfort. As far, the fire department's always approved it, it's really not a safety concern, but from a tree canopy and from a location concern, I like the aerial show better, but it does cut down on the length of the show a little bit, and we, typically, we advertise for a half-hour-long show, and they've always delivered it. And we stuck with Zambelli's, because we've had such a long time partnership with them, they know the area, they know, you know, our protocols, they know the specs for the site, we just, we're more comfortable sticking with someone that's been working with us over the period of such a long time.
And it's on July 1st this year.
It is, last year, we brought it in front of the board to actually move it off from the 4th of July, and move it to the Saturday before, just due to when I've got so many employees working there, making triple time when the 4th of July falls on a Sunday, it gets really expensive.
Is that going, what day is the parade going to be on?
Well, the parade, we worked it out with the parade, that's always going to be on July 4th, so we're still going to have our veterans ceremony, like we always do, last year was the first year we didn't have it on the 4th, and we've still had an incredible crowd there. So it didn't affect our numbers at all. And I also think by having it on the Saturday helps people attend the event, because they don't have to go to work the next day. So the weekend was one of the reasons we wanted to promote it to a Saturday, was for the attendance. So part of it was financial, part of it was attendance, we're, I think we wrote it into the MAFE last year, too, that we wanted to try it for a couple of years, and then we'd collect the data and kind of see where it falls out. And if it makes sense to move it back at some point, we will. But Saturday seemed to really work out last year, especially with employees getting time off over the holidays, and, like I said, we have those years where the 4th falls on a weekend, and it gets really, really expensive from a staffing.
Okay. Last question, Derek, since Trustee Morocco brought this up, it's just a question. I was a citizen that asked me a question about why is $25,000, why is the price even?
Well, the price jumped. Fireworks doubled in price about two years ago, when it started going up in the 25, we, you know, we can't, we talked to a couple of other companies, we talked to a couple of their communities about different firework vendors that they might use, Zambelli's is like the biggest firework distributor in the country. And we've always worked with them, but there are other local communities that have worked with other vendors, and they haven't been real happy with what they get for a product. So we, we don't, I don't know if this was capped at 25,000 in the bid package, I don't believe it was, but when we specify what we want for a show, all these companies are right in line.
Yeah, no, the question was, when they asked me, if a citizen asked me, why the number doesn't have a, is no, for instance, 24,240 cents, what is even, he asked me, Jose, you have different fireworks that, that's all the question was, okay, that's, that's all. All right, any other question?
Sure. I just think we have to make sure that we get the updated certific of insurance, too, prior to, that we've got our, we've got a tickler on that. Okay, thanks, Derek.
Yep. Thank you. Trustee Ritchie?
Yeah, well, now that Sam brought it up, I guess, I still didn't hear an answer to the question, are we doing, are we doing the full aerial, or are we going to do the ground show, too? I guess I didn't hear the answer to that.
I got to be honest, members of my staff handled this, and I'm not quite sure how they divided this out, but I can guarantee you, for 25 grand, it's going to be a hall of the show either way. I just know that, I just know that from, from my experience and the conversations that I have been involved with, with my staff in the past, the ground show fireworks- the ground show fireworks, they just don't project to a larger surface area. And because they're so low, some of them, I'm sure between the fire department and the fireworks company, they got everything under control, but for me
Seems like a risk.
It, it seems like something that I wanted to start getting away from, so that's probably why they parted out the bid package for more of an aerial show versus a ground show.
Just one comment, since I've been on the board for several years, that, uh, one of the things, I guess, uh, we talked about with, uh, if we change companies, uh, you were talking, and you kinda hit on this, Derek, about some people have been disappointed. I think Zambelli's has been very consistent, you know, we, we've got very consistent show each year. So, you know, that was, that consistency of, of knowing what you're gonna get and how it's gonna look, uh, has kinda played in our mind as well, so.
Well, and that's, we tend to stick with what's familiar, right? And if it's, it's not broke, then it's, we're not
Seems like it's always been fantastic shows, so I mean, that's, I guess that's why, yeah, we haven't had anything to, uh, to doubt against that, so.
Okay, okay, moving on.
Sorry, one quick question, is there any reason that we have to decide if we're awarding Plan A or B? Bid A or B?
I think tonight is just to award the contract to company A or B, but not show A or B.
The cost is the same.
The cost is the same either way.
We're just funding the
Can we get A and B?
Yeah, if we have fifty grand, I'm sure they'd be
No, twenty-five, twenty-five.
I, just real quick, so, I, I, one of the reasons I was inquiring is because I was in favor of the, the more aerial, because I, I live in the area, and I, I see people on Clarkston Road and Sashba outside the park. So it seems like we could service more residents by keeping it higher in the air. That was, that's why originally it caught my eye, and I tried to decipher what the difference was, and I counted up all the shots, and it just didn't, nothing, it wasn't really clear, so that's why I asked. But I would say, I would prefer we stay with the more aerial one would be my, uh, you know, my suggestion if I was asked.
I agree.
It's hard, too, for two years during the pandemic, we actually shot these off from the top of Pineob Ski Hill. And even then, we get, well, I still couldn't see them from my house. It's like, that's the highest elevated place in town. I don't know where else we could go to shoot them off, but we do the best we can.
Okay, all right. Any other comments? Member of the public, no? Moving on.
We need to make a motion.
Make a motion, right?
I'll move to accept the twenty twenty-three Independence Fest fireworks bid from Zambelli Fireworks for a price not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, and authorize the township supervisor to sign the contract once it has been received and reviewed.
One second.
Motion have made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. Moving on, regular business. Okay. Well, we have, we have Derek Smith.
Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
Uh, item number one is request to accept the Parks Recreation and Seniors Capital Improvement Plan, reprogramming and associated budget adjustment. Uh, and we talked about this when we approved the capital improvement plan at, at the budget table back in late November, early December it may have been. Uh, when I rolled out our capital improvement plan, we know that this is always subject to be adjusted, amended, reprogrammed, whatever terminology you wanna use. Well, we've come to the realization that the, uh, the pavilion that we wanted to build at Clintonwood Park to remove kind of the circus-style net uh, that we string between that quad complex, the cloverleaf baseball complex, four through seven in the back, uh, it just wasn't gonna be a feasible construct at two-hundred-and-seventy thousand, and we had other needs that were more pressing in other park facilities. So we'd like to take that two-hundred-and-seventy thousand from that project and reallocate it throughout the park system to other areas of need. One of those would be the Bay Court Park entrance. If anybody has been to Bay Court Park, um, I don't know, over the course of time, you know that the front entrance road is somewhat of a disaster. So I'm gonna put this up so you can see what we're talking about here. Oh, there it is, thanks, John. Magically came out of the clouds to do that for me. So here's, uh, just a quick park paving, uh, idea that we've had. It's a little bit hard to see, but, um, I'll come over here so I can point it out to you. This parking lot right here was expanded last year, uh, the road village that we passed, there were a lot of millings involved from tearing up the old road, and Parks and Rec actually benefited from that program over the last three to four years. We have crushed millings in all of our parks now. It's better than gravel, but the problem we're running into now is when the potholes come back, they really come back. So from this, this is paved at the entrance here. This is brick pavers that we have planned to replace in the next, uh, couple of years. This is asphalt, but from here back to these two parking lots is, it's really bad.
It's terrible.
So this is the new parking lot we just put in last year, which is millings, and it was packed, and it's in great shape. And we've had a lot of really good comments on it, and, and people are very appreciative of the overflow parking. But this is section one, which, um, I wanna say, I know it's at the bottom, you might be able to see it over there. I think this is sixty-eight thousand here. This parking lot here is gravel as well, as long as, as well as this turnaround. The turnaround entrance here is always full of water. Uh, it really gets depleted from cars constantly going around this corner. Um, one of the things that I do wanna know is in our Bay Court Park playground project that's taking place this fall, the Land Water Conservation Fund is requiring us to put in additional handicap parking spaces. So by reprogramming this money and paving this lot, we'll be able to save some money on the playground project because these parking spaces will already be completed. Now, what I can tell you is this new playground that's going in will also include a sidewalk that goes on the out, this will be curb cut, and the new sidewalk will go around the outside of this curve and connect the paths so you're not cutting through the center of it. It goes around the curve along the road. So, one, this, I think, was sixty-eight, I believe this was just over sixty. And then paving this health trail from the safety path up here at the front of the park, it would connect and be more walkable for strollers, skateboards, roller blades, more ADA compliant to have this graded and asphalted for people's usability than what we have there now. What we have there now is like a crushed, like a crusher dust, kind of a, um, what are the, when you said brick pavers, you use a lot?
Slag.
Slag. So it's all, it's all kind of a slag through here, and it's, there's weeds growing through it, and it's, it's just not real usable or visually appealing. So we have a plan to do this at all of our parks, but this one in particular, because we have so much investment going into this wedding venue at, um, Brady Lodge, we didn't want brides and wedding parties showing up at the park, wanting to go to a super-nice facility and traveling down a pothole-ridden road to get there. So this is part of a long-term plan, but the money is now available by canceling that baseball, um, pavilion at Clintonwood Park to be able to realize this portion of the project. So that was, those are three of the things that we would like to accomplish. Um, another thing wa, is we have a ton of dead trees, and we mentioned this about Sashaba Plains earlier. Tree removal is a very expensive business to get into. Um, we've taken down trees in all of our parks over the six years that I've been here, and some of the bigger oaks might run you four to five thousand dollars. That's not just to drop them, that's dropping them, stump removal, chipping them up and hauling, hauling them away. A lot of times, we can just have them drop them, and our guys will cut them up, and we haul them, uh, behind the maintenance garage at Clintonwood, just try to save some money. But in this case, at Sashaba Plains, we already removed the brush pile. So we got three quotes to eliminate twenty dead trees at Sashaba Plains. The cheapest one, I believe they're in your packet, was right around eighty-five hundred dollars. The most expensive was, came in at just over thirteen thousand. So we do have a plan to, to eliminate those twenty trees with this reprogram. Also remodeling the bathrooms at Sashaba Plains. This includes, um, the two new doors for the restrooms that I had mentioned, new locks, the trim work around the doors, repainting the insides, replacing any toilets or sinks that, they're all functioning at this point, but they're not real visually appealing. Some of them have a lot of rust stains, um, but they're all functioning currently. But, uh, yeah, they're, we need to, to pretty them up a little bit, so this should be plenty enough money for our guys to be able to get in there and get that done. So, and then the last thing, Brady Lodge upgrades. As you know, we did come into ARPA funding, uh, and we have an ARPA fund plan. And then we also received a grant from Oakland County a couple of weeks ago that was approved by the board for two-hundred thousand dollars, but that is a matching grant. So whatever we spend, let's say, we, we know we wanna use this grant money for a new roof at Brady Lodge. We, the roof is almost a hundred thousand, we have to put in fifty, and then they match it fifty thousand. It's a fifty-fifty, um, grant match. But they're very particular in what you can use those ARPA funds for. When we first got the ARPA funds, I wanted to complete this paving project at Bay Court Park with those ARPA funds, but you can't use it for road improvements. It, they're only infrastructure-based. So both of the grants that we have are building infrastructures related to, the grant in particular is related to seniors. So our senior center will receive a large portion of that grant funds for some of the upgrades we have going on there. But we can utilize Brady Lodge as a senior programming center, so we're able to use those funds for the roof or any other, um, HVAC system needs that we have. Those grant funds are available for that. If, once we expend that two-hundred thousand dollars within that, we can then reprogram the ARPA funds for other needs. So you gotta kinda take a look back and find out where your funding model is and what you can use the money for, and how to best use it appropriately, I would say. So I, I think that by reprogramming these funds into these particular projects, we can really get a head start in the game on next year. Um, and master planning Sashaba Plains, whether it's putting in a whole, tearing out the base, or the bathroom facility and building a whole new facility, whether it's replacing the play, playground, these are big amenity items that I think we need a strategy for. I can come here and tell you what I think is best, but I think public input sessions, getting the public's opinion on what they would like to see there before we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in that park. It, just think it would be best served to the community and the residents of our community to get their input on what they would like to see. Uh, yes, we can continue to pretty up Sashaba Plains and make it a functioning and high-standard park. However, the amenities in that park are getting old. The playground is twenty years old, um, the restroom facility is really kind of a half restroom facility, half maintenance garage. I'd like to separate those two. And honestly, as we heard tonight, the access to those amenities are very far away from the parking lot. If we wanted to redesign the parking lot to go along that eastern fence by the apartment complex, we could fill that in and make it more available parking, so the amenities are more accessible at the backside of the park. But these are all things that, again, they need to be planned. The reason our parks are the way they are now, and it's no one's fault that's in this room, but they, they just weren't planned very appropriately. It was, they're piecemeal parks. This year, we have enough money to do this, and this looks like a good place. This year, we have enough money to do this, and this looks like a good place to put it here. But if you notice at Clintonwood Park, we've got three ball diamonds here, and the other four are way over at the other end of the park. They just weren't planned very well. And I wanna get out of that process of just throwing things into open space and taking a more of a strategic approach so we can really build a system that's accommodating to everybody. So this is the plan we've put in place. As we know, I turned this in prior to the meeting that we had regarding that public-private partnership. So you may look at this and say, we don't wanna go this route. We, we may wanna go a different way, and that's why we put it in front of you for discussion, so.
Thank you, Derek. Um, I see, I see the, you know, we have been working several months about this, and you presented something. The, it makes sense to me, but my question is about, you put in forty-four thousand dollar for the main hall floor for Brady Lodge. I saw we just doing right now the roof and the heating and cooling. We didn't move yet for the floor and the wall construction, yeah? And the reason I say in this is because we don't know it's forty-four thousand dollars, right? Well, why, why you come up with this number?
Well, we've actually met with several contractors at Brady Lodge, and, um, of, most of the contractors, whether it's a port in place, like, uh, stamped concrete or an epoxy, most of them are coming in right around the thirty thousand dollar mark to put a new floor in the main hall. Now, that divider wall, I already have a quote on that, and it came in at seventy-eight hundred dollars. The divider wall that we're talking about is you have the main hall in Brady Lodge, and then you have the secondary room where all of our maintenance equipment is currently housed. That is a floating wall, it's open at the top. So in order to kind of control the heating and cooling in those two spaces a little better and potentially have two separate programmable and rentable spaces, um, once we move all of our maintenance equipment out of there, sealing that wall off at the top and enclosing it to have two separate programmable spaces, just seems like a, a better option long-term.
All right.
Okay?
Well, I would like to follow up with this, with this item with you, okay? And I would like to, also, if you can come tomorrow, first time, eight or nine in the morning to my office, and we will talk all this, okay? About everything we talked tonight. All right, any other questions?
Go. Um, I just wanna make some comments. Uh, um, the parking lot thing, I mean, it is almost impassable to get to the Brady Lodge right now. That road is so bad out there. So I was, I was surprised the first time I went there to note, to see it wasn't even paved, that you couldn't take a nice car into the park. Um, the dust in the summertime was unbearable, the potholes were terrible. Um, you know, having this venue, which we're hoping to be a big money generator, which it's going to be, we need to have it. You need to be able to have car shows there, you need to be able to have people be able to drive their, uh, expensive cars there. I mean, it, it, it was, it's really bad. So I, I, I see the value in getting that paved because we're, you know, that, that venue is gonna be a big deal, and it's, you know, if it's gonna make four or five thousand a weekend, it's, it's, you gotta be able to rent the thing. And it, and that road's pretty, uh, impassable, and the maintenance alone of it is just throwing money away.
Well, here's the catch-22 is, uh, we had a relationship with the city of the village for years when they had a belly plow dump truck, that they would come out once a week or whenever we would call them, and when it'd get bad, and they would come out and grade it for us because of our partnership. Well, they no longer have that piece of equipment, and we don't have a piece of equipment in our, between us and D P W with a belly plow on it that can grade that road. So the trade-off is, we can spend sixty-eight grand to have that one portion of it paved, or we can go out and buy a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar dump truck with a belly blade on it. So we just don't have, we just don't have the resources to be able to maintain that road at an, at an appropriate level.
And there's a second note, just, uh, because I was so involved in it. Uh, the partition wall is critical to the, to the heating and cooling working in the Brady Lodge. And to have it aesthetically be historically matching the building is adding to the cost because it's all exposed timber and, and beam construction. So it's a concrete wall ten feet high, and then from that point in the gable, not only needs to have a thermal break, but it needs to have decorative wood on both sides that, that matches the ceiling. Um, that facility having its own separate air conditioning, you know, and, and heating uh, is gonna be a much more manageable rental space for baby showers and things of that nature that are a smaller scale, under a hundred, you know, under fifty people. Um, it, it gives the Brady Lodge an opportunity to be a rental, uh, for people who need it with less than a hundred and fifty people. If you have a smaller, uh, event, it makes no sense to rent the main lodge. So this is gonna make it much more versatile and, and probably, uh, keep it rented, uh, a lot more by doing, by doing it.
Absolutely.
And the flooring was only quoted in the main lodge. This does not cover the secondary lodge, the, the secondary space that we're creating. We didn't wanna put that in there right now. We were mainly focused on the heating and cooling and the, uh, flooring because of all the repairs that have been made to it, because walls were taken down and stuff. So it's not a monolithic-looking floor, it has all It has all these breaks where old walls used to be. So we put emphasis on the flooring as part of the initial package to be done this before the big rental season comes. And then other people are going to work on the other pretty stuff and other areas in the future.
On the unfortunate side too is currently, we don't have anywhere to put all of our maintenance equipment. So I, I really don't want to do the secondary room floor until we find somewhere to put all of our, our maintenance. I mean, we've got a tractor that sits in there, a truck, lawn mowers, you name it, gators. And I didn't want to put a brand new floor in there in a rental space and be driving our maintenance equipment in and out of there. It just didn't make sense, so.
Okay. Claire Newick?
I just wanted to comment that I am also in favor of doing the paving. That's going to also aid in the winter times with the winter rentals with plowing and salting, trying to plow and salt over potholes. It is a voting precinct. It will be wonderful to have better access in and out with it being a voting precinct. And I am in favor, and I know I have spoken with you before about that extra area that you're talking about, that we're not working on the flooring yet. I see that as, you know, a, a great revenue source for brides and grooms for getting ready prior to their, you know, when they're getting married on location, to have brides like prep rooms, things like that. And so I look forward to what you can bring to us and that we can hopefully financially handle an, an additional building for, you know, the machinery and things like that. But in the meantime, if we're still going to rent that out as additional space without changing the flooring and that is the room that those things are housed in, I've been in there and the diesel and, and the exhaust fumes, what will we do to combat that if we're going to rent that out?
Well, and we did, we actually put the, the new maintenance garage addition out for bid quite a few months ago. And it came back $50,000 more than what we had hoped. Came in at just under $300,000 for a three bay maintenance garage. But materials and the market at the time was, was very high. We have noticed with these last few bidded projects that the price of those materials and contractors, what their bidding prices are starting to come back down. I know Dave and I have talked about it on several occasions that, you know, a building that maybe we bid out six months ago that came back at 299, now it might come back at 250. We just, you know, the market at the time that we put that building on the street, what probably wasn't the best time to, to get it out. So that one will be part of the board package coming up in the near future.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Trustee Alamato?
My question is about the trail paving. Because I can't see that many people taking a stroller all the way to the entrance. I just, I mean, if, if it's already that crushed limestone or whatever it is right now and it's worked for a few years, is there a reason we can't use the trail paving money for something else right now at Sashawal Plains and figure that part out later?
It, it's very possible. That's why I'm putting it in front of you. I can tell you that if we were to pave this, just like we're interested in paving the trail at Clintonwood Park that has grown over and is no longer even visible in a lot of parts of the park, they will get very heavily used. It is right off the safety path and people that want to walk to the park, non-motorized pathways, have a nice paved trail to get back to our new playground, to get to the Lakeview Room, to that back pavilion. It, it would be an amazing, not only visually aesthetically addition to that park, but from a usership standpoint, it would be, it would be awesome. But that's why we're here to discuss it, right? If, if there's something that you, it can always be backburnered and saved for something else. You're not going to get much of an amenity at a different park for $60,000, but I mean, I'm, I'm more than happy to have those conversations and reprogram it if that's the case.
Did I show Brown?
What, do you, do you know what the cost would change for, if this was paved all at once? So when they're doing the road, they do the pass at the same time?
They have all their equipment onsite, I'm sure.
What kind of a savings is that over having them come back in two years and do it? Because that, that could influence our decision. If it caught, if we can save 10 grand by having them do it while they're already out there versus doing it in two years for twice as much. Well, I just don't know the answer to that.
It's already in the quotes. So that savings is already in the quotes that they sent us. And we, this is, hasn't been out for bid yet. This is just a local company that actually paved the parking lot and the turnaround in front of the complex, Ottmans, the local asphalt company that did that project.
They did what's there, right?
I'm sorry?
They did the other paving.
They did, and I believe they did the parking lot in front of the Lakeview Room too. So they're, they're local and they usually give us great deals on their products. So I, I wouldn't assume that somebody will come in lower than what you have in front of you. They might, but you never know.
Okay. Trustee Morocco?
Last year, concrete was cheaper than asphalt.
Right.
So.
Okay.
I'm all for it, but I think like, I, you know, I was putting in concrete driveways at a considerable savings to asphalt last year. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't rule out, have, when we put it out for, you know, for a formal bid, that we have concrete for, I wouldn't, you know, for the sidewalk. Not as big of a fan of it for the road, but for the actual safety path like we do in the township, would be a, a more maintenance-free, longer-lasting viable option that would, right now, it's unusual that concrete is cheaper. So that would be another reason that if you wanted to take it, if you wanted to get the concrete and take advantage of it, now might be the time when patrol, when gas prices come down, asphalt will be cheaper, but again, not as good of a product, you know, and it doesn't last as long. And then you're top coating it and it's a continual maintenance thing. So just keep that all.
We do have, we do have a concrete company under contract for a safety path. So we could have them come out and give us an estimate on that and see what they come out.
That seems like a better option. You know, that's something they're, in their wheelhouse, so it might be something I was looking at.
Okay. Any other questions? Trustee Alamato?
I think my reasoning about that trail paving, because if you took that 65,000, you could use something that you were mentioning with ARPA funds somewhere else, that you still have money that they would match. When you were talking about either seniors or maybe there's something at Sashawal Plains that would be more of a building, that you'd be able to get those matching funds instead of just throwing it at a paving thing that can be done later. So that was the thing in my mind, is if you had somewhere else to put that 65 grand that might get matched, just to move that ahead in your line of doing things.
I just, I, because of the Oakland County grant, it has to be senior-related from an infrastructure standpoint. So that's why, again, with the ARPA funds, the first thing I looked at when we received, the township received like $3 million in ARPA funds. And the first thing that came to my mind was, great, I'm going to pave our parks. I mean, because it, it's, they're bad. And we can't use ARPA funds for paving. So the grant that we received, I did go down the list to see if there was anything else that we may be applicable for those grant funds for. And can we reprogram what we turned into the county to say what we wanted to spend the money on? And it, it is a, it's kind of a give and take relationship. They're, they're pretty specific about what you can and can't spend those dollars on. So.
Okay.
Noted.
All right. Thank you, Derek. Any other questions? Trustee, Sonny?
I don't, I, I can't say that I disagree with any of the decisions made here, but I, I feel like that I disagree with how we're making these decisions. Has there been any effort lately to put together the Parks and Recreation Committee?
Yes, it's a, it's part of the package, right?
No, it's not. That was the senior committee.
That's the senior committee with.
I have had discussions with Supervisor Aliaga on that and we're, yes, we, we want to get it going. The first March is going to be our kind of inaugural, let's get this thing off the ground and get it going. I know you've been very interested. We had a planning commission meeting here with a lot of people interested in environmental sustainability. I know that we have interest from the Clarkson Cultural Arts Group. I've got the players lined up. It's just a matter of getting it off the ground and having that first meeting and we're shooting for March at this point.
Just, I, you sent me an email about that, remember? And then I, I met with Derek and we come up for March, it's going to be when he's presenting the, the board again. Because this is a reappointment, right?
Well, it's not a reappointment. It's, for the longest time, I couldn't get anybody interested in being on the, on the committee. And I've put this thing together probably three times in the seven, almost going on seven years that I've been here. And it, because it's an advisory committee and not a committee with any sort of, of power, I show up every month and give them a report on what the department's doing and then we end up losing interest just because they don't feel like they're a part of the process as much. So, and that may fall on me. I don't know. In every community I've ever worked in, we've had committees of this sort. And I've constantly would bring them these sorts of plans and say, you can make your recommendation to the board, which would carry more weight than just me coming because now we have a board of residents making a recommendation to you. But for whatever reason, they just, I can't seem to keep them together and get enough interest in them to have people.
I've seen other boards, vacant seat on this board, it was put on the front page of the township website. Have you done that for?
Yes, it's on the website now, for all boards, committee and commission.
No, a specific boards list, this board. I thought, I thought I've seen it within the last month or so. It was listed, applied to this board.
Yeah, and just so you know, when you sent me that email, I already talked to Derek and he told me by March, we're going to have that filled out. But you know, Derek, we have a lot of citizens lately, I mean, they're very interesting and worried. I mean, I think we need to reach out to citizens and ask them also if they would like to be part of the committee. Because those who have the best interest, you know, for Sashawal Plains, yeah. But we'll do that. All right, but let's follow up tomorrow too about that. I would like to invite the people, you know, they are very concerned about the parks, invite them to be part of the committee, be part of the solution and then involve and get more ideas, more input for the people who are concerned, yeah.
A load of this for him. I can't believe how much he does.
For, for, sure, for the people that are interested to sign up in this committee, you, you need to come to the township or you can print application online to our website for the township and you can apply to be part of the committee. That's, that's all. So absolutely, yeah, we need more input. I would like people to.
And Derek said as well, he likes input from the community as far as the decisions they want to make.
Absolutely, no. When you send me the email, follow up with Derek and Derek, we agree that by March, we got it, we're going to get it done, but sure.
That's the sales point, right? I mean, I can make these recommendations and we can have these conversations, but they do tend to carry a little bit more weight when they have a recommendation of a board that is made up of residents of the township. So it's, it's not, that's, these conversations will be happening there instead of here, which I think would save this board time as well.
Is it possible to hold off on deciding on this until after an advisory committee can actually come together and agree on it? From as far as the township residents to actually give input on it?
We always, we always kept, then, if we approve this, we always can amend this, right? Later or no? The.
Yeah, we're already doing it.
Because I want to keep moving because, you know, what happened is with Brady Lodge, we have people that can actually rent. Brady Lodge is going to start on May 1st and we need to move forward some of these projects. That's why I want to move forward. But by March, we will have this committee. If it recommends some changes, I'm happy to do those changes and bring to the board. And we can amend this. But I want to, I don't want to keep delaying the, taking action. You know, you bring a good point about, and you too, but you have to, I want to, Derek and the public to understand, the difference between this administration with previous administration, I believe is, my administration is looking forward to fix the parks and 100% commit to do this. We meet almost every week to talk about how the progress of these projects goes. And I involve the two full-time officials and those decisions and sometimes I work with even Trustee Morocco, the officers, experience in building. We always, we're working and then I would try, I would try to keep you updated on what we're doing every week, okay? But I did follow up with your two quest emails, all right?
And this, this capital improvement plan is always subject for reprogramming. It just, this is a great example of it, right? We, we had an idea of something we wanted to do. It didn't seem feasible for this year, so we're reallocating the money to other things that are of more pressing need. I can tell you right now, there's two or other, three other things in that capital improvement plan that were approved back in November. And here we are four months later and there's two or three other things on that list that I'm already thinking about bringing back in front of the board to reprogram to areas of need. So it just, as time goes on, things like Sashawal Plains become more important, visions become a little bit more clear, so.
Trustee Morocco?
In hindsight, I wish that some of this stuff was separated. When it got on the maf of things that we could get matching funds for, for the seniors and then just regular park improvement money, it's kind of all bundled together, so.
There's nothing on here that can be matched by that senior grant.
What about the, the work on the Brady Lodge?
I do not believe that the items, the floor, and I do not believe the floor and that wall are considered part of their infrastructure verbiage. I can go back and look at the grant application.
I find it hard to believe that a.
That a roof would be, but a wall wouldn't be?
No, I'm more thinking about san, a sanitary floor that we're going to make a rental, that the seniors are going to be on, that we need to use a commercial scrubbing machine on, which is why we're trying to get rid of this whole nasty concrete floor that's got all these seams and patches in it to make it flooring. So I, I'm more, I'm not the, you know, that's why it, it seems like it would be, it would be part of the, the infrastructure improvement if we're going to house the seniors there.
Let's say, let's say you approve this tonight for the 44 grand and that grant is applicable for these projects, that divider wall and the main floor. If the grant is applicable, we just save 22 grand on that project. So if you don't approve it, then the questions move. But if, if you approve me to be able to move this 44,000 into the wall and into the floor and it is applicable to the grant, then we already have the money set aside per this board's recommendation or approval. I can use that 22 grand and 22,000 of those two projects will come out of the county's dime and not ours. So.
I just don't want to, you know, there's a lot, we put a lot of effort into making this a rental facility and the floor is an integral part of the rental facility. We're doing it bare bones, heating, cooling, and the floor. You know, that's what finishes the building to an extent that it's a, a very viable and higher, higher and finished product. You know, the other stuff, moving money to Sashawal Plains within the, you know, your budgets is a different issue. That, I'm just, that's the only thing, I'm, I don't want to, I don't want to not finish Brady Lodge's floor with a small amount of money, you know, 30 grand of it. And the heating and cooling project is a moot point if we don't do the wall. So that's all I'm bringing that up. The other stuff is, is a different, is a different entity, is a different thing to me. Those are just park improvements that can go in any park. This is very specific to this one historic building.
I don't want anybody to think that this is the only money we have going towards Sashawal Plains. The, the mulch has been built into our budget every other year forever. So that's already coming out of my operating funds. The tree work wasn't in my operating budget. That's why it's on here. But we have a land improvement line item in our budget that we put money into every year for park improvements. So this isn't, just because these are the only two things that are part of this particular reprogramming, doesn't mean that that's the only money going into Sashawal Plains. The grills have already been paid for. You know, the staining and fixing picnic tables and all that sort of stuff has already been built into the budget. This isn't, we haven't just been talking about Sashawal Plains for the last two, three months. You know, we were talking about this during the budget process last year. So we've already built a lot of these expenditures into our operating budget. You're just not seeing it on this form. So I don't want people to think that this is the only money going into that park. We have other money set aside in other areas, not just what you see in front of you tonight. So.
Okay. Trish O'Brow?
I know we hear Sashawal Plains Park a lot and, you know, for me, I've been on the board for 10 years, seven years prior as a treasurer, three years as a trustee. And I, you know, I think I failed in a lot of ways as a trustee for three years because I didn't go visit Sashawal Plains Park. And it wasn't until people came in, wasn't until Trustee Stoyan raised this issue and a lot of others, that the park was bad. And at the end of the day, it's not our employees' fault, it's the board's fault. It's our fault and I take responsibility for that. Some of us, some folks weren't on the board at the time. I didn't do a good enough job to go out there and look at that park when we were approving expenditures for that, for that money. And I guess it's not something I've said up till now and we've heard from a lot of people, I'm sorry. I, I should have done a better job. We understand now, everyone on this board does, and we're going to do the right thing. It just, we just don't want. We understand now, everyone on this board does, and we're gonna do the right thing, it just, we just don't wanna rush it and get it wrong. Or just, or not do the best we can, but we've heard you and again, you have my apologies for it. I do wanna move forward with this, but I I absolutely believe we're gonna, they're gonna, you're gonna see a big change at Sashawal Plains Park come spring.
Well, and there's still, there's still two more rounds of Spark grants through the DNR. The trust fund and land water conservation fund grants aren't due until April first. There's still opportunities for us to be able to get into state funding for some of these amenity replacements. So there's opportunity there, it's just, I know patience can be hard sometimes, the grant program's a year program. You apply April first, you don't find out if you get awarded until November and projects can't start until the next spring. It's another year out from where we're standing right now, so.
Yeah, and it was just, I mean, but for trustee, excuse me, but for supervisor Aliaga taking me out there. To realize, I mean, I just remember going through there with him going, oh my God, how did I not realize that that there was an issue there, so. That's that's on, that's on me and that's on, you know, the board when these things happen, it's on us, we'll get it right.
Yeah, now, I take.
And the thing is, we need something nicer for the kids and especially disability.
Yeah, please, we have the Florida, so, well, it's no, it's because, okay, members of the board. During the the last, the summer, like I said before, I went to a lot, I got a lot of complaint for several people back in. May, June, July about Sashawal Plains. And I told them, and I told everyone, then I would do something about it. Since I got in office, the first thing I did is work on Sashawal Plains, I still work, it's just three months, I just three months in office, I still working on it. You see, when you're a trustee, you don't get to see that because it's the supervisor who actually work full-time directly with the director of park and rec. Because the director of park and rec report to the supervisor directly. So the supervisor is aware directly in the operations twenty-four seven, it's a truth, you know. So since I got in office, the first thing is, in my agenda is, make sure the parks are at good standards and I will deliver that. And part of this package is a hard-working dedication in the last three months with Derek and members of the board. That's why today I presented to the board and to the public, not just this package, but four items that are very important to improve for parks. And I wanna ask the board tonight to support me and move forward with this. If have, something has to be changed in the later future, we will amend this, to make sure that everything goes right. But I want your support at this point to move forward with this. And this is include to fix the parks, we're talking about the problems of the parks, I bring the solution right here in front of you. It's gonna be, it's up to you guys if you guys are gonna vote for it or not, but. It's what I wanna, that's what I aim, I ask you for your support at this point, yes trustee Stoney, absolutely.
So we're we're pushing through as far as timeliness for the urgency of Brady Lodge upgrades. Is there a way that we could just approve that only and table everything else for when we can get a Parks and Recreation Committee back together?
Dan, can you tell me a little opinion? What, yes?
You want to answer it?
Yes, please, I want to. I mean, I can, I would like to.
Yeah, so the short answer is, right, you're being asked to approve a capital improvement plan, it's not a bid, you're not going out for bid, you're not actually approving the work, that'll all come back for bid in the future. So if you wanna piecemeal it and approve just a portion of it tonight, that would be up to the board, a majority of the board, yes.
I want some clarity on what all this, I know where you're coming from, you wanna dump money in the Sashawal Plains.
No, I just want the.
No, I think it needs to be done, no, it needs to be done, I'm I'm for it, I'm just. I don't know how the money works because I'm new at this, so I don't wanna not do something and then just have money sitting there and nothing get done. Because we don't have a plan or we don't have enough to do anything substantial or we can't finish anything, so that's not good management either. So I need, I wanna, I need to understand that, you know, there's more money to be used, like what what on this, would we? Would the, I'm gonna call it a study group, you know, would the study group be looking at capturing off of? This for reallocation, like would we be, would the board be willing to not pave Bay Court Park right now and have that money taken away? Or the sidewalk that that Terry's talking, you know, like what, how how is that gonna work out, you know, so.
Maybe I can help?
Sure.
All we're doing right now is saying, he's trying to tell us, we're gonna move this money into a particular bucket. But he doesn't have permission to spend it yet, anything over ten thousand dollars has to come back to the board anyways. This stuff hasn't been bid and so almost none of this, the bathrooms could probably happen because it's, you know, it's five grand. Everything else, they're gonna be put out to bid and come back to this board to be decided, so. All we're doing is is approving, moving this money from one place in the in the plan to another and into a bucket, but this board will approve before any of this is spent.
Let me just make it clear, I again, I don't disagree with any of the decisions that were made, again, I just wanted a committee to actually make the decisions. Because it feels like that's the right way to make these choices, but that makes more sense now, we're we're just approving this to go out to bid.
We're putting it in a bucket, none of the bids have happened yet, but the board's not approved spending this money yet.
So then we could pull out the floor and it would come back as just a floor and a wall later for approval, but not burn it up.
But I also like the idea that by March, we will have that committee for for the parks. And but this is already approved and you guys will be looking to this, alright?
Yeah. Yeah, well, all we're asking for is to approve a plan, right? And and no, this isn't to offend any sort of advisory group, but I get I get paid. To be the Parks and Recreation Director for this department to put these plans together from my knowledge of expertise of being in this field for twenty-five years. Now, I'll bring this to an advisory committee and ask for their opinion on it. But ultimately, at the end of the day, I'm the one that's responsible for all this money that's on the table. So, and you're right, Paul, these just go, this is just saying that this money is gonna be put into these buckets. And I still have to bring all these projects back to the board to get them approved once they go out to bid. So i- if if we can make a quick appeasement here, I would be more than happy to take off the the trail that you were saying. If we wanna take that off, that's sixty-five grand right there, however, I think it's imperative, imperative. That we pave that entrance road and pave that parking lot. It is, it is a disaster and it's been that way for years and years and years. Now, as I mentioned earlier, the parking lot that we wanna pave will save us money on that playground project, which that money will then become available for other things. Just like Deer Lake Beach, we approved the renovation, the restoration of Deer Lake Beach, we budgeted a hundred and forty thousand dollars into that bucket. The bid came back at a hundred and nineteen thousand, I think it was. We have twenty thousand additional dollars that I'm gonna be bringing back to this board to say, I have twenty grand left over, this project came in under budget. I can reprogram this into something that's more meaningful. The problem we have is the things that need to be done at Sashawal Plains aren't twenty grand, they're not sixty-five grand. The things that need to be done, there are a new playground, you're looking at three, four hundred thousand dollars. A new bathroom facility, you're looking at four hundred, three, four hundred thousand dollars for that. These are kind of things, little bucket list items that we need to do to improve the overall district and not just all in one basket. And we just don't have the money to go all in one basket, we don't. We get, as I mentioned, we get three hundred thousand dollars a year and I've been fortunate enough to be able to write grants and double that money from time to time. But the process is long and if you're writing grants now for a project, you're talking CIP in twenty twenty-four. This isn't, if you write a grant for something now, you are not getting that money until next year, potentially even twenty twenty-five. So if you want big ticket items, they need to be planned out years in advance if you're going to leverage the trust fund against that project. And if if not, if you're looking, if the public decides that they want a new playground and a new bathroom facility at Sashawal Plains. Then this board has to decide where six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars is gonna come from. But you're not gonna be able to nickel and dime it at sixty-five grand here, twenty grand there, it just doesn't work that way. Now, next year, when I'm standing here to get my budget approved and I've got three to four hundred thousand dollars to do park improvements. If everybody tells me, take that three to four, cancel all of the repair work on your vehicles, your maintenance tools. Your fences that need to be replaced, all this sort of stuff, you want me to cancel all that and put all that money into a new playground? That's your, that's your choice, as your Parks and Recreation Director, I am here to make recommendations of what the best viable options for our money is. Okay, so I just wanna be clear that we we save all this money on these projects and we can move all these, you know, these funds around. But for the amount of repairs and things that we're looking to do at that park, you're never gonna nickel and dime it to piece it together and have enough money to do what people want. It's just not.
Thank you, Derek, trustee Alamato.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three PRS budget adjustment for reprogramming the Parks, Recreation and Seniors Capital Improvement Plan, yes presented.
A second.
Motion have made by trustee Alamato and seconded by Clark Newbeck, simple majority, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carry, thank you Derek, let's go for the second.
Alright, even though I'm I'm talking about this next one, it's actually not a Parks and Recreation project. This is a township-wide initiative that I just happened to be kind of shoved out in front of the crowd from a mouthpiece standpoint. What we're talking about here is brand development services for the township. I currently, the Parks and Recreation Department is the only branded department within the township. And I'll just, I know I've given this presentation a few times to the board and I'm just gonna give a quick synopsis of why you do it. We branded our department with a marketing plan and a branding plan. And we tie our strategic plan to that branding and marketing plan, so my employees. My employees tie their performance to that strategic plan and we brand ourselves to the community about who we are. Not what we do, which is important, that's the most important piece. It's not about what we do, it's why we do it. And I think that one thing collectively from a township that we've been lacking is that strategic vision. We have never sat down as a staff and a board to talk about where we wanna be five years down the road. What do we wanna look like, what do we want, how do we wanna project ourselves as a township professionally? To the residents, to the commercial sector, to visitors that come to our community. Right now, we use four or five different logos across the township. You know, our department has a separate logo from every other department in this township, which I disagree with. I I, for my entire career, we have always fought to be just as important as everybody else at a municipality. But yet, the first thing we do is separate ourselves by giving us a different logo than everybody else, right? So there's some truth to that, but this goes down to not, and everybody thinks it's just a logo. It's not just a visual representation of ourselves, it's why we do what we do and who we are. And I think that by going through this process, we're gonna learn a lot about ourselves that we probably didn't know. And we're gonna be able to, as a unified township, be able to project ourselves onto our residents, our customers, our consumers. The visual representation is just the very, that's the cherry on top of the sundae. But I think collectively as department heads and collectively as a board, we need to have this strategic vision. Of how we wanna move ourselves down the road and what what are we looking at, what do we wanna be? Who do we want people, when they say Independence Township, who do we want them to, what kind of image or what kind of expectation do they expect? We have a very high per capita household income here, we have a very high standard for the services that we deliver. But yet visually and our perception and how we give ourselves out visually to all of those folks that expect a high standard. Personally, I think that we're doing ourselves a disservice because we've never talked about it, we've never worked on it. So this is something that I've been through this process quite a few times, it can be taxing. And you may not see the fruits of that labor for a few years down the road, but it's worth every cent. And I I've seen it work for the city of Novi when I worked there for ten years. I look back at their community now and say, wow, the stuff I worked on almost twenty years ago now, it's all come to fruition and it's amazing. I did it when I was the president of what was Michigan Recreation and Park Association. We rebranded ourselves to M Parks, changed the name, a name that had been around for over fifty years. And we're now reaping the benefits of that branding package and getting ourselves at the table and lancing to be able to tell everybody who we are and what we do. And so that's kind of the short term, I know I've given the presentation a few times, I know it looks like a high dollar amount. But this is something that will be setting the table for this township for years to come, so.
Thank you Derek.
That's my soapbox.
Thank you, I wanna make a quick comment, actually have to deliver Sashawal Plains. When I went to Sashawal Plains, one of the things that brought my attention is the signage, it was, the signage is not very visible from far away. And a lot of people sometimes don't know that it's a park because you don't have a big sign there. So I asked Derek, what's going on with the sign, he says, he replied, Jose, you know, we cannot put a sign because we need to, before we put the sign. We need to have our logo and it has been postponing for many years because we don't have a logo branding. And I says, really, yeah, it has been for many years. And I I told him, we need to get it done and that's why this is here, because he's right. Many departments, DPW, Parks and Rec, and so, many others have different logos. And we need to have our logo, the identity, and this part of this package because has to do also with the parks, we need to have our logo. And that's why I'm bringing that to the board, it was bringing before at least two or three times, right Derek?
I presented it twice, yeah.
That's why I asking again for your support, I mean, something that have to be done and I will get, wanna be proud, wanna have our own identity and I think have to be done by professional people, okay?
To Jose's point, we have two different signs at Bay Court and Clintonwood. Same sign, it's internally lit, projects from both sides, two different logos, they look like they're not even owned by the same municipality. And then you go to Sashawal Plains and the the park entrance sign that we have there, it looks like a county park, it's a brown sign with yellow lettering. It doesn't look like anything like any of the other parks we own. Well, I don't wanna put money into something and have to replace it again later on, just like we talked about the entire park, the entrance sign is no different.
Alright, hold on, members of the public would like to address, okay, please, can you come to the podium, address your name, address, please?
I am the supervisor of Bay Court and my day-to-day operations with there, I get asked.
Your name and address, please.
Ray Quapich. I get asked if it's an Independence Park or if it's Waterford because it's a different logo even to our trucks, all that different stuff. So I mean, that's one of the reasons of being out that far, people ask if it's Waterford or if it's Independence Township. And I have to tell them it's Independence Township.
Thank you, Ray.
And part of that reason too is the cursive logo that we have on that. When you drive by that park at forty-five mile an hour, you can't even read it. And it's because of the cursive lettering, so.
Any other questions from members of the board? Trustee Stoney.
So we're talking about, we wanna have a strategic plan for our future, who we wanna be, who we wanna become. Isn't that already what the master plan is, a master plan of our township as well as the master plan of Parks and Rec?
Yes and no, we can incorporate portions of that master plan into the strategic planning. This isn't gonna be a strategic plan, this is gonna be a strategic branding plan, it's how we accomplish the goals within that plan. If we wanna talk strategic planning, we can, we can go about that in a different item. But I think that this will be able to give us enough conversations internally and with some external components. You know, if we wanna bring in the chamber, if we wanna bring in an optimist club, if we wanna bring in different members of of residents of the community to come in for input. I I don't think we're ever gonna get away from the bell, right, we're Independence Township, the bell is a staple of who we are. But can we modernize the bell, right, can we make it look newer and not like seventeen seventy-six bell? I don't know, I'm not, I'm not, I've got a Parks and Rec degree, not a branding and marketing degree, but that's why I think we need to get these folks involved to get us on the right path.
Thank you Derek, trustee Stoney.
Yeah, so as far as branding a township, it's, to me, it feels like you you brand by the contents of your township. For me personally, if I think Traverse City, Michigan, I think, you know, beaches and whiners, if I think Denver, Colorado, I think skiing, I've never been there, but that's what I assume. When you think Clarkson, Michigan, or Independence Township, you think. When you think Clarkson, Michigan, or Independence Township, you think small town with big city attractions. And we got DTE Music, we got Pine Knob Ski, we got great Parks and Rec and outdoor activities. We had awesome downtown with nice restaurants downtown. People think of a township, they think of the contents of that township and that's how we're branding ourselves. You, you never, I would never say to myself, oh, where do I want to go? Oh, I want to go to Traverse City because they had, I saw an advertisement and a cool logo. I would never expect someone to want to spend time and money here based on an updated logo.
But that's, it's not just the logo. That's, that's your point is it, it's back to the who you are. In my department, we have a, a public relations person who, every marketing piece that goes out of our department, she has to get her eyes on it because there's a language that we use to promote things within our strategic plan. Environmental sustainability, conservation, healthy active lifestyle choices. We have a tagline, healthier, happier living. Cause those are, that's who we are.
Right.
Right? And you're exactly correct. The logo is such a simple thing and that's, like I said, the cherry on top of the ice cream sundae. But it's all the ice cream flavors below it that you spend more time on that everybody enjoys more than the cherry. They just see the prize, right?
But I, I feel like we've got such a great brand, why are we trying to rebrand? Especially spending $20,000 to rebrand something that I feel like we already have.
Hold on, no, we have, we have like four or five logos right now.
Derek said that we've got one and then everybody else is kind of using a similar one.
No, we have in the website, if you go to our website right now, it's one. DPW have different, Parks and Rec have another one. Fire Department have another one. This building have, yeah, they have different ones. So this idea has, we were talking about this about at least four years. That we need to do something about it. This administration has committed to just decades, well, maybe decades. But the, like I says, we are committed to deliver it now. I don't want to keep postponing for more, for more and more years. I want to get it done now. And this is a good idea that we were talking before, he brought the presentation two times and I told him, let's get it done. I mean, but if you think that this is not a good thing, then we had a for vote and let's decide. But I think that we need to get it done because we cannot have postponed our parks. All these parks has this logo, these other parks has this logo. And you know what? That's why Sashaba Plains cannot have a nice sign. Oh, you know what? Because Fire Department or DPW has this logo, oh, we have to postpone. I don't want to postpone anything. I want to move forward, I want to deliver my promise to the people. And this is our chance, this board, to tell the people, we're going to get it done. If you guys don't want it, then we'll put it for a vote. So somebody would like to make a motion?
Well, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Okay. I've been on this, over 10 years ago, I don't even know when was Wagner Supervisor.
2008.
Okay, well, when him, he left and Neil Wallace was kind of doing a lot with us, I got the Township Board to put aside $20,000 for the entranceway signs on Dixie Highway, decades ago. They never did it and spent the money, you know? And we had went to, um, because I've always had an issue with the fact that you can't tell. Now you can tell when you're leaving Waterford because we don't allow blinking and flashing LED signs. That's the only reason you can tell. You, all of a sudden it gets dark, you know, and, and just street lights and it becomes a more subtle environment. So that, that's a good thing for us. So we had went to the Oakland, uh, the trade school over there.
Oakland Schools?
Yeah, and had the students do a program, uh, the graphic arts students. And they, they had designed entranceway signs. I bet you I had 50 different ones, all matted and formatted to present to the board for our entranceway signs. And they did nothing with it. I got them to allocate the money and they did nothing with it, you know? It's been an ongoing thing. Even when Springfield did their entranceway, uh, at 75 and Dixie, Pat Kittle called me and he goes, oh, did you notice Springfield put their entranceway sign? I was just like, yeah, I did. And we're supposed to be the ones that are, you know, advancing here, you know? And we never got it done. So it's always an excuse why nothing is done because nobody can get on the same page with the logo. And I agree, it's time to put that to rest, you know? I, I think a tagline would be something nice to have because we have things that other people don't have. You know, if you have a stay in play as somebody's, you know, there's a million of them that give you a little flavor, you know? And I, I just, you know, I don't care how it gets done, but enough already. Somebody pick a, pick a bell, fix the crack or don't, I don't care. And get us a tagline and let's start printing and let's start making signs and let's start identifying ourselves. If they can't, if it costs 20 grand to finally get somebody to give us a couple of ideas to choose from, at this point, I'm on board. You know, if somebody else wants to spearhead it and go through that process, that's a whole different thing. But it, it does need to get done and it's, it's becoming a hindrance to the township that's not getting done. I appreciate you taking it out because it's not really your department. But I do, I am in favor of whatever it takes to get this thing wrapped up, you know?
Yeah, I'm, I, you, how I start this is that a lot of people sometimes when, it was brought to me for many years when somebody says, where do you live? Some people says, I live in Pine Knob. Where do you live? I live in Oakers. I live on Clarkston. But most people say Independence Township because most people don't know about it. And that's how we come up in the conversation of we need to have our identity, we need to somehow have the logo, Independence Township or own branding. Even when we start the conversation, somebody says Clarkston. But Clarkston downtown is not part of Independence Township. But if you tell someone where you live, you would says Clarkston. And most people say, oh, you have a nice downtown, but that's not part of Independence. Nice downtown, don't get me wrong. Clarkston is, in my heart, I feel is part of us as well. But Independence Township, part of this is to make Independence Township have their own logo, their own branding and their own identity.
And that's going to be a big part of what gets tackled in this is we, we have an image issue. And that image issue, and I tell people all the time, where do you work? Independence Township. Where's that? Clarkston. Oh, I, I know where that's at. And it is, it's, it's separation, yes, but it's our own identity. And that, I think right now is something that we struggle with. And it's, you nailed it. All the things that you just mentioned is why people want to be here. It's a quality of life, right? We have a high quality of life in this community, a high standard for quality of life in this community, but we don't project ourselves as a township in that manner.
Uh, Trustee Estonia, that's first.
So, um, as far as branding, that doesn't seem like it's really the point here. It does seem like that we want to be all on the same board and I completely agree. We should all have the same logo. We already have a logo, can't we just have everyone use that logo? And if we do deem it necessary to get a new logo, is it possible that we don't need to spend $20,000? We could maybe even open it up to the public and say, hey, the, anyone, you can submit a logo in a vector file format and the one that we pick, you get $500 cash prize money.
Okay.
We, we actually tried that. I was part of that, gosh, it's got to be six years ago or seven years ago. Uh, I think we had Kurt Cattalo involved to, to some point. We had a lot of people involved and we could never agree. The more people you bring in, the more disagreement there is. And, and I think it, it just felt like we just never get there, but we never hired a professional who does it. And it, and it just seems like we've tried this many times. And all the things you said, that is who we are. We're trying to, we need someone to help us, how do we say that in our logo and in that communication? And we have tried. I, I was in a lot of those meetings seven years ago. And you know, Kurt Cattalo is awfully good at that sort of stuff. And even with his help, we couldn't get it figured out. So for those reasons, I, I, I am in favor of, of actually spending the money on a professional. And if we're going to end up with something, we're going to have to just put trust in that process and this board will make a decision, are we going to go with it and go?
Trustee Alamato.
Um, I just want to let you know that marketing and branding are totally different things. We are not just looking for a logo here. It encompasses everything that you just mentioned. Why do you live here? Well, I don't live here because there's a Liberty Bell. It goes way beyond the logo and it does need to be professionally done. It's almost like if you were going to get a loan and they, you want to open a business, they're going to ask for your business plan. And this just brings you to another level of, um, when you're asking for those grants or whatever, people are going to get it. Like Lake Orion came out with their, we're living as a vacation, but everything that they do focuses around that. And it's known and you talk about it and it's not just a tagline, but you get it. And someone professional needs to be here. And we don't want to be, we want Clarkston to be the little brother, not the other way around, is how I look at it. Independence Township needs to come to the forefront and it's exactly like you said. People don't know where it is unless you say Clarkston. And I love the downtown, but the township is totally separate and we need to, it's way beyond a logo, that's all. And I don't know if helping, like, looking online, the difference between marketing and branding.
No, I understand the difference.
Understand.
I understand the difference.
Um, but yeah, it has been a long time coming.
This is going to go out for bid too. So this is not going to get spent until someone bids on doing this proposal and the board approves that too. So it's going to come back.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Alamato. Thank you, Tricia Brown. Just, everything I'm bringing here tonight is because I got input from the people and that's why I bring this package. But again, it's part of the identity and everything. And I don't want to postpone this because it has been postponed for many years as well. I didn't know what's discussed, probably in the board in 2004, where Dave Wagner was the supervisor and action didn't, they didn't talk action on it. And I don't want to, tonight, repeat history for 2004. Actually, I want to have a positive impact and move forward. And I think this is, I believe in my heart, this is a very good thing.
I can honestly say, I, you know, I work in the township lots, I'm in a lot of people's homes and I run, I talk to a lot of people. There's a lot of people in this township who don't even know where they live. I mean, residents of our township, if you asked them, you could sit there for an hour, they'd never come up with Independence Township as one of the options. I mean, they just, they really think that they live in Clarkston. They really don't even know what township they live in. That's, that tells you everything you need to know right there, that it doesn't roll off your lips like, where do you live? And you actually say our town, you know?
Thank you, Trustee Morocco. And I spoke with an employee from the Clarkston Village. And she told me that a lot of people, when they move to Independence Township, the first thing they do is they come to the village asking, you know, about the information. And they tell me, hey, no, you're not in the village. You are in Independence Township. I says, no, I bought my house in Clarkston. It is Clarkston. No, you are in Independence Township. And they don't know. So, and what they're saying is facts, it's the truth. I mean, that's why I, I believe this is a time that now we can, you know, move forward and, and bring on new logo. Yes.
Is it the $20,000 I had set aside for the signs still around? Cause we can throw that at this.
I highly doubt it.
All right, somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the 2023 Budget Amendment Number Six for Township Brand Development Services in the amount not to exceed $20,000. And direct the Independence Township Parks Rec Senior's Director to post the request for proposal for brand development services as presented.
A second.
Okay, motion have made by Trustee Richie and seconded by Clark Newbeck. And it's simple majority. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Okay. Moving on. Now Derek, the floor is yours.
All right.
Welcome back.
Yeah. Free Lodge, um, what are we on to first? Heating and cooling, correct?
Yes.
So again, a little bit of a historical subject here. We have been trying to get heating and cooling put into this historical building for probably a couple of years now. Um, it was quite a while ago that this board had approved, per my recommendation, that we have Noah and Fraus do a facility study. So they hired a company, Matrix Consulting, that came in and gave us, um, gave us an idea of how we could heat and cool this facility by retaining all of the historical value, not changing the roof. This was kind of an as-is proposal of what it would take to be able to provide this as a 12-month out of the year facility without taking any of the integrity of the inside away from the building. And I was kind of embarrassed to bring that in front of the board because the options were anywhere from $500,000 up to $800,000 and I just knew that we'd never want to spend that money on heating and cooling the facility. So, uh, knowing that we have a very busy rental season coming up and knowing that we want to make this facility available 12 months out of the year, Supervisor Aliaga and I've had several conversations about this and how do we get this done in a more effective manner? So the only way I really knew how to do that at the time, um, was to get our, our building official, Dave Moran, involved. Uh, so in a very short time period, we put the bid packages out on the street. We had a pre-mandatory bid meeting for all of the heating and cooling companies that were interested in, in applying for this bid package. We had seven companies show up to the pre-bid meeting, which again tells me that the market's starting to slow down and there, there are more companies looking for these sorts of jobs. And then lastly, we had a bid opening, uh, the following Tuesday where we had three companies submit bids. Uh, this is a design build project. And what that means is we had all these companies come in for weeks prior to the bid packages going out to give us their ideas on how we could heat and cool this building as effectively as possible by retaining as much of the aesthetics as we possibly could. And through those conversations initially, it, we came to the realization that the facility needs a new roof. The, the building had a new roof put on it back in 2013. And I know that's only 10 years. However, we have water damage in our drop ceilings in the hallway going back to the bathroom. We have water dripping into the main facility, the main hall of the facility. And this is new terminology for me because I'm, I'm a Parks and Rec Director. I'm not a heating and cooling specialist by any stretch of the imagination or a roofer. But through conversations with Trustee Morocco and, and our building director, Dave Moran, we threw around a couple of ideas of either spray foaming the ceiling and then covering it back up with wood, which we would lose all of that historical perspective of the ceiling. So then we got into a discussion about insulating the roof from the top down. So now, in order to properly heat and cool that building, we need an R38 rating? I have no idea what the hell that means.
Yep, that's right.
Sorry for the language again, but I'm not a building person. So just from the conversations we've had with many contractors, if we insulate that roof from the top down to the existing shingles off, put down a foam insulation, um, I believe it's five and a half inches total, two and a half, um, stacked on top of each other and staggered to be able to retain all of the heating and cooling within the space. And then redo the facial work so they breathe properly. When we do the roof, we can get the R38 rating that we need to be able to reduce the cost of the HVAC system. So the reason that original study had the HVAC system so expensive is because it was with the existing roof that was there and not including the spiral ducking. Now, the spiral ducking that we're proposing is having furnaces upstairs in the loft area that, that space of the building will probably never get used for anything. So we want to include three furnaces, four furnaces in that space, three to do the main hall, one to do the bathrooms in the hallway. And then another unit in the front room, that secondary room we talked about off the main hall, has, right now, we use it as kind of a maintenance closet. There's going to be another furnace in there to do the secondary space and then one in the basement to be able to heat from the ground up. So, uh, air conditioning units, the locations of those, um, obviously on the exterior of the building, out of viewing from the windows, which we put a lot of consideration into that. Um, so we did take a lot of opinion from several different contractors on how this could be done. We actually went through the process of looking at more of a commercial furnace, the big furnace units that sit outside, but then we're punching holes through the roof, through the walls, trying to get all of that air circulated into the building. We didn't want to go that route because, and, and Sam, you can talk way more intelligently about the study that was done and how you got to the air ratings that were, you know, that were compiled. This is just my Parks and Rec view of it, so you guys can jump in whenever you want.
Sure. Thank you, Derek.
Thanks.
So, thank you. Uh, all right, before I say the floor, I want to say a few things, comments about this. When it was brought my, brought to my attention was actually from Trustee Richie. Trustee Richie told me, Jose, you told, Trustee Richie told me, Bray Lodge doesn't have a cooling and heating. When is, when we're going to put a heating and cooling there? And Derek make a presentation last year and says, Jose, you make it to the public, I mean, it's going to cost like.
And Derek make a presentation last year and says, Jose, you make it to the public, I mean, it's gonna cost like around seven hundred thousand dollars only for heating and cooling. Seven hundred thousand dollars, just for heating and cooling. Then I says, wow, we don't have that money, but Trustee Richie is right, we need to get this done. So we, I decided to put a committee together with Trustee Morocco Voluntar to us to help with Dave Moran and Derek, come home and see what we need. Now, what this package is proposing basically is, we're gonna have a new roof, insulation, heating and cooling with two hundred thousand dollars. Instead, we spending seven hundred thousand dollars, we only gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars. And we just all getting heating and cooling, like before. We're gonna get, we're gonna a new roof, insulation, heating and cooling. And I think this is a very good thing because we saving money and we being more efficient. Now I have to thanks, uh, Trustee Morocco, because he put his time, I mean, he put time away from work, family, to be able, 'cause it took several hours for him and, and our building director, Dave Moran, to actually work with Derek and get this thing done. And I think this is a very good thing. Now, Trustee Morocco?
Yeah, okay, well, all good things. Some of the key points are, as we identified too, is that the building is in disrepair on the outside because of the cinder block and it needs work. So we, we know that that's coming back to us, we've gotta spend some money on the outside. So when Derek sent me the report and I reviewed Noah and Kraus', the Kraus'. I, I, I was floored, 'cause I'm like, I've been doing this thirty years, I, my specialty is historical restoration. The numbers were just ridiculous, you know? So, uh, with all of us, I had done the insulated roof panels on my house that way, because I live in a historical, timber frame, uh, section of the house was that way, that, so, the, I had, um, uh, my spray foam company come out and give me a quote to insulate that ceiling, and then we would have to put wood planks over it to, to mimic what it used to look like. Just the spray foam on the ceiling was fifty grand. Plus, then the planking was gonna be probably almost another forty thousand to re, to reduplicate the ceiling. And all then we would get was the insulation. So that's when we decided, alright, the roof is, never was really a great roof, they went with the lowest bidder. It was a relatively mediocre job at best when we did it, the products that were used, but at that time, it was like, let's protect the asset, get a roof on it, different than what we're doing now. So what we come up with was, if we can insulate the roof, replace the roof, it also didn't have fascias to hang the gutters off of, so this solves that problem. The whole entire building now is in an R thirty-eight, which is what a house is at. So, with the six furnaces that we're proposing, um, overall, uh, if you, uh, the, we couldn't do it with six furnaces without the R thirty-eight. So when the process started, I was like, well, what are we basing it on? So just so clear, it's the cooling that is hard to do, heating is very easy. So everything is based upon air conditioning. Body heat, hundred and fifty people, carbon monoxide being exhaled, I mean, all of these calculations, so that if you're in that space, it doesn't superheat when you're in there in the summertime. So when we did, the, um, I had called an engineer that I had, and I said, hey, could you, you know, if I gave you all the information, could you give me an energy calc, so we could determine what the energy needs for the furnaces would be? 'Cause all the other six hundred thousand dollar prices were based on no, no, uh, thermal break at all. So I got the guy to do it, he turned it around in forty-eight hours, only charged us four hundred bucks, um, to do the engineering for us. Then we had something to actually base, you know, statistics, you know, how are we gonna size these air conditioning units? And it came in just under fifteen ton of air conditioning, which is three big furnaces and air conditioning units, if we could meet the R thirty-eight. Then we went after that, 'cause we already had the pri, inside priced out, which made no sense. So we're like, alright, well, let's get, um, Dave hooked up with a contractor he knew that could come out and give us a ballpark of the thermal panels on the roof, lifetime dimensional shingles, the, you know, the, the, uh, certainty timberline, pro, the, the very best shingles on the market are what we're putting on this building. So we're looking at, we're hoping to get twenty-five to thirty years of, you know, no issues on the roof, all new flashing, all new rubber roof over the front porch, I mean, everything for under a hundred grand, um, insulated, with all the insulation.
I think it's important to note too, that the funds for the roof project are ARPA funds, so they're not tax dollar, does, it's not coming out of our residents' pockets. And it's also important to note that the HVAC system was the grant that Jennifer from our senior center wrote. It's a matching grant, so I'm not sure if we can use ARPA funds to match the other half of the Oakland County grant, but we may be able to get this entire thing done without any funding coming from my department or from this board, out of the general fund. So it's, it will be all grant funds and ARPA funds.
Alright, just to touch on a couple more points, is that one of the things too, that we worked on, uh, with Dave and Derek, is that we, we didn't wanna send it out and spend another fifty grand on engineering, when we all had a pretty good idea from, uh, the first report, Dave's experience, my lifetime experience in it. So what we did, which I, I think was a little different, and I know that 'cause the guys who bid the job complimented us on it, is we made it more attractive for them to come bid, we made it a mandatory meeting. We had seven legit companies with all of their guys, and we literally battered, batted out every detail of where would be the best place to put the furnace, the duct work, the po, you know, how's it gonna work the best? And we literally, uh, came up with a, a basic, uh, we all had an even consensus of the best way to go after this and the most efficient way to go after this, and everyone bid it the same way that we all had come up with, you know? And, um, when the bids did come in, uh, we, uh, with the heating and cooling guys, there was, uh, 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 you know, we're, we're, uh, we're recommending, um, Nichols.
Right.
Uh, so we went with a local company who's right, you know, right here on Dixie Highway. Um, they've done stuff for the township before, uh, they're excited to work with us, they gave us a better price to, uh, keep being, uh, our guys. Um, so I think that that, you know, that, that worked out, um, uh, we're, it just has worked out really well. And every, the whole time we were talking about, if we could save money and we could get this done for like regular people money, not government money, you know? It would give us more money to, to do exterior repairs and put more, you know, reallocate, so, um, I just think it was a win-win. We put it together fast, uh, we got a good consensus, we got a good amount of people to vote on it, and the numbers are what they should be. About a hundred grand with all the insulation and all the heating. We still have to do electrical so that, uh, to, to feed these. Um, we have to upgrade the gas meter that Dave's working on, because we don't have enough gas at the building to power it, so there's, and some of the exterior repairs. So there is some extra stuff coming, um, but I think that, uh, you know, we saved a, a ton of money, uh, doing this, and we're really gonna get a good value for the residents.
Any other comment from board members, Trustee Alamato?
Um, I'd like to thank you guys for doing all the extra work. I would ask though, since it is one of our historical buildings, is this something as it's going through all this renovation and stuff, if you could video? So I could do like a time lapse video to have the, um, or a bunch of pictures, I think it's just neat stuff to save down the road.
Okay.
Sure. It's a really good idea. Matter of fact, I think ITV, we've had discussions with them about time lapse videos on some of our projects in the past, it's a good idea.
Thank you. Any members of the public that would like to, no?
Trustee Richie.
Trustee Richie, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I, I'm sorry for.
As I say, uh, we took office many years ago, like, one of the first things we did was, uh, go out and, uh, and tour Brady Lodge, 'cause one of the decisions that had to be made is whether we were gonna keep the building or not. And actually, uh, I think it was a cost of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to tear it down, so.
What, we spent two fifty?
And, uh, so, and I mean, the, the roof was totally in disrepair, I think you could look, you know, on the inside, you could look outside and everything, so. So, you know, we put a, you know, I guess, it's a very unique building and very cool, and I, I was one of those that voted to, uh, to put money into it and try to keep it, not, not tear it down, so, um, I guess, my concern, I guess, I think it's a goo, a great facility to rent out. Uh, and I, you know, Jose's talked about, uh, I, I guess I keep bringing up, 'cause everybody that rents it, I go, hey, do they know there's no air conditioning? Do they know there's no heat? You know, depending on what time of the year it is, it's like, you know, I wanna make sure people understood that, because it's, 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 to me, it's like a, it's like an outdoor, uh, area. You know, 'cause you can't go there and expect it to be temperature controlled and everything. So you're depending on whatever the outside temperature is, is gonna affect your, whatever's gonna go on in the inside, so. But I, I guess, it is historical, and Sam, I guess, I, I was glad you're part of this, because hopefully whatever we do on the inside, you know, we wanna keep that, the ambiance and the look of that, of that building. We don't want, I guess, a bunch of, you know, weird duct work going around and, you know, spoiling the, the aesthetics of the whole building as well, so.
There will be some spiral duct work exposed, there's really no way around it.
And I, I think we're kind of fortunate too, because the industrial look is in right now. So if you go to big open thirty thousand square foot brew pubs and all the places that people enjoy to go now, that spiral ducking is super popular. Because, and we designed, when we got to the point to where we're at, all the, the, the light sconces that we picked and everything that we've done to that building on the interior has all been with that industrial thought process in mind, 'cause that was the era of the building, so you should go to the basement sometime, you'll see industrial. But it's, um, that's, one thing that's playing in our favor is, you know, originally, we didn't want to do that because we didn't wanna take the visual aesthetics away, but in order to do that, you're paying seven times the price.
But, but we're putting in the style of duct work that is more aesthetically pleasing than just galvanized rectangle boxes, is what I'm getting at, so.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's what I hope we keep, you know, hopefully we go for some aesthetics, not just the cheapest cost as well.
Well, and we did, our duct works are all specked out different, so what you can't, in, in, uh, in utilitarian areas, it's going to be standard duct where the public's not allowed, and then where the public's going, we're spe, you know, we've upgraded it to the decorative duct work in, in those areas.
Speaking of the main hall, is, you know, you wanna keep the aesthetics as, as good as possible in those areas, so.
And Ron, and that's the main concern that we have before, that's why we brought Sam and the, our building director, because you are right. We don't wanna make radical change and, you know, lose the beauty of Brady Lodge. But also, if, if, if you guys see this, all this package today is things that has been postponed for many years. And what we tr, we tried to do tonight is being proactive and get it done, because this, this is no, nothing that was postponed for a few months. This is postponed for many years, the logo, Sasha, Sasha Plains, and this, um, heating and cooling has been for many years, and I try to be proactive, 'cause I wanna show also the community, the this administration, us, try to bring results, and that's part of this. And by the way, I honestly, when I see, when, when I asked Derek, Derek, I was very excited, how much we need to put the heating and cooling, let's do it! And he says, seven hundred thousand, I'm like, wow, seven, do we have seven hundred thousand? And then the first thing I says, wow, and then I, I call Sam, I says, Sam, what do you think? And we're starting looking ideas, and we put together this committee and Sam, experiencing with Dave Moran, and then, you know, we, we work, we really work. We put extra time and we did extra mile to, to deliver this proposal for you guys tonight, and, and I hope you guys support me in this. And I think, uh, I know it's some concerns, but, uh, we have also the, um, we have the, uh, the Kraus, not on Kraus, right? We have the reporting, it's gonna give us a good input for the people that's gonna be working in this, correct?
Not their report, but.
No, no report, but it's a.
Well, the important thing to remember is that this is for the seniors, this is where, they're, they're gonna, this, this facility is, is a facility that they need. It's not just a rental facility, and that's why we're getting all this matching funds, is that it's gonna become a rental on the weekends, and hopefully the seniors are gonna really get some use of it during, uh, during the, uh, the non-rented days.
Well, it's, it's not just the seniors, but you guys have heard me say for years that we could really use a community center, not just athletically, but programmable space. Right now, the only indoor facilities that we own are the Lakeview Room and the Carriage House and the Senior Center. And this is, this is something that our department is gonna be able to program year round. So, and this is desperately needed space by our department.
Exactly, because right now it's two seasons, and now it's gonna become the whole year, and it's gonna bring some revenues too, by the way.
A lot of revenue.
Right, revenue, so, and I think, uh, it's a good opportunity, if we move forward, it's gonna bring also a positive result for us as well.
Alright, would like, somebody would like to make a motion, or, or anyone there, um, okay.
Sorry, I'll move to accept the Brady Lodge Heating and Cooling Bid Proposal from Nichols Heating and Cooling in Waterford, Michigan, for the amount of ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, including a fifteen thousand dollar contingency, with an amount not to exceed one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, and direct the supervisor to sign the bid contract.
Second.
Okay, motion have made, and second, before we go to vote, I would like to ask any, anyone in the public would like to address to the board? No? Anyone online, you would like to say, any comments? Okay, now, now it is okay. This is my simple majority, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried, let's go to the next one. Derek?
Alright, last one. So, uh, we, I think we already went into detail kind of about both projects. Um, this is for the roof replacement. Uh, we had, again, we had seven companies show up for the mandatory pre-bid meeting. A few of the details were hammered out during that, uh, discussion, so we, we had an even playing field through the bidding process. We only had four of those seven companies actually submit proposals. Uh, and again, pleasantly surprised, a local company out of Wixom, Source One Construction. As I mentioned earlier, you can kind of see, there's still a little bit of this, this is what the project actually costs, but I'm gonna throw this huge number against the wall and, if they were gonna pay it, we'll make it work in our schedule. During that, the recession and some of that pandemic, a lot of companies were just throwing arbitrary numbers out there, 'cause they were so busy. But, you know, if you're dumb enough to pay it, we'll, we'll fit you in the schedule. So there, you can see that there's quite a bit of a, you know, disparaging number between the low and the high bidder. So we're still starting to get some of those companies that are still kind of throwing out numbers, hoping that they, they catch a big fish, but.
Wanna make a comment if I can?
Sure.
I just want, when we got the bids, you know, from two hundred and fifty thousand to ninety-nine thousand, it was like, you know, ridiculous. Uh, we knew who was serious. Um, I talked to Derek, we both had, and Dave, we both, we all, you're always concerned about the low guy, you know? Ninety-nine thousand dollars, the other guys are at a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-four thousand, um. So, um, I asked Derek if it's okay if I called the references, so I did, I called four of the references of the company. They have sixty employees, they're a huge roofing company. Uh, I talked to the guy who handles all of the federal contracts with this company for the forestry, uh, FBI, and one other one that, uh, is a guy that said that they always go above and beyond, they're, you know, a good company to work for. So the ref, you know, four references, uh, three of them called me back, one of them did not, then I called the owner of the company. I spent an hour, uh, on the phone with him, kinda hammering him out, figuring out what they were all about, what their approach was, 'cause there was some details that we didn't really publish, but we knew that there was ways of staggering the foam and things that we needed to make sure happened, but weren't outlined in the proposals. Um, he actually, uh, gave up that information in our long dialogue. So I just, I wanted to make sure, uh, that I had never heard of them, we, you know, we Facebook surfed, uh, and we did, you know, we pretty much stalked them anyway, anyway I could find anything out about this company. Um, and I wanted to make sure that we were confident going in with the low bid, that it wasn't some fly-by-night operation, and, uh, and that we did our due diligence to, to vet them, so, um. Thirty years in the business, um, from what I got, unless it was the best show on earth, I feel comfortable, um, that these guys are up to the task. They're a big enough company, they got a ton of people, um, they're available, um, sooner than later, they've got a lot of spring projects coming up. Um, they're well-versed in the, in the foam, uh, and insulation on the deck, uh, work. Uh, they're also gonna be putting new commercial gutters on the front of the building, we're also replacing the whole rubber roof on the flat part of the porch. Um, we were very specific about all of the, uh, uh, flashings and replacement, so, uh, just from a builder's perspective, I feel, I feel real comfortable that, uh, even though their bid is low, it's a fair bid from a reputable company.
Thank you, Trustee Morocco. Any other comments for members of the board? Any comments from a member of the public?
We just want to go home now.
Any comments from, from people online? No? Anyone would like to make a motion?
I moved to accept the Brady Lodge Roof Replacement Bid Proposal from Source One Construction for ninety-nine thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars, with a good ten thousand dollar contingency, uh, with the amount not to exceed one hundred and nine thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars, and approve the reappropriation of our prop funds, and direct supervisor to sign the bid con, bid contract.
Support, okay, motion have made by Trustee Richie, and supported by Trustee Morocco, and a simple majority. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Before, uh, I wanna say a few more words, uh, I wanna thank all of you from the bottom of my heart for your support, and looking forward to see the positive result for our community. Um, next, we have a closed session, so I have to make a motion for a closed session.
I'll make a motion to enter into closed session to discuss a confidential legal opinion pursuant to the Michigan Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen dot two-six-eight H, and MCL fifteen two forty-three one G, and the time is eight thirty-one.
Support.
Motion have made, and supported by Trustee Richie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This is a roll call.
A roll call, sorry, a roll call.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Alamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Richie?
Yes.
Trustee Stoyan?
Yes.
And Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Derek. Before, uh, I wanna say a few more words, uh, I wanna thank all of you from the bottom of my heart for your support, and looking forward to see the positive result for our community. Um, next, we have a closed session, so I have to make a motion for a closed session.
I'll make a motion to enter into closed session to discuss a confidential legal opinion pursuant to the Michigan Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen dot two-six-eight H, and MCL fifteen two forty-three one G, and the time is eight thirty-one.
Support.
Motion have made, and supported by Trustee Richie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This is a roll call.
A roll call, sorry, a roll call.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Alamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Richie?
Yes.
Trustee Stoyan?
Yes.
And Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Derek. Before, uh, I wanna say a few more words, uh, I wanna thank all of you from the bottom of my heart for your support, and looking forward to see the positive result for our community. Um, next, we have a closed session, so I have to make a motion for a closed session.
I'll make a motion to enter into closed session to discuss a confidential legal opinion pursuant to the Michigan Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen dot two-six-eight H, and MCL fifteen two forty-three one G, and the time is eight thirty-one.
Support.
Motion have made, and supported by Trustee Richie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This is a roll call.
A roll call, sorry, a roll call.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Alamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Richie?
Yes.
Trustee Stoyan?
Yes.
And Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Derek. Before, uh, I wanna say a few more words, uh, I wanna thank all of you from the bottom of my heart for your support, and looking forward to see the positive result for our community. Um, next, we have a closed session, so I have to make a motion for a closed session.
I'll make a motion to enter into closed session to discuss a confidential legal opinion pursuant to the Michigan Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen dot two-six-eight H, and MCL fifteen two forty-three one G, and the time is eight thirty-one.
Support.
Motion have made, and supported by Trustee Richie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This is a roll call.
A roll call, sorry, a roll call.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Alamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Richie?
Yes.
Trustee Stoyan?
Yes.
And Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Derek. Before, uh, I wanna say a few more words, uh, I wanna thank all of you from the bottom of my heart for your support, and looking forward to see the positive result for our community. Um, next, we have a closed session, so I have to make a motion for a closed session.
Everybody left before we got our reports, eh?
Yeah, I still.
I let him know, so go ahead, hopefully. We're good.
Back to order. We need to make a.
I'll make a motion to return from closed session and to resume the regular meeting at 8:53 PM.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Communication official agenda reports. Number one, report Orton County Sheriff's Department monthly report, January 2023. Number two, minutes, information technology oversight committee, I T O C, January 2023. Three, minutes, safety path advisory community, January 2023. Board members and comments? Any board member?
I do.
Sure.
All right, so I want to bring you guys up to speed on this open space forum thing that we had. Uh, we had a lot of great turnout. That's something that's passionate to me about the development of the community in open space. That should be no secret to anybody. So, we had the meeting, we had people from the Blue Heron, Oakland County, myself, Jerry Fisher, the planning commission, a pretty full room of people that wanted to have the dialogue about it. Um, it is a master plan year, so. I'm, I'm proposing to come to the board at the next meeting, um, to create an open space study group. It would be very similar to Park's thing. So, let me give you a little highlight of what we would be doing for this. I've been in contact with Dick Carlisle over this many times of how we would go about this process of, of, of some of the options. We had a lot of different things run out there, so. The committee itself would be tasked to investigate the means in which the township can assure, uh, adding permanent preserved open space. That would be one thing we would be looking at. Exploring options and regulatory changes, including incentives, state grants and preservation incentive programs that would be available to us. Acquisitions of private, um, property or partnering with land conservancies, land donations and township funding mechanisms. We'd be looking at to attain open space. Uh, establish priorities for preservation in the township. Reviewing current or current ordinances and the master plan and how they would, uh, could be tweaked. Look at what has worked in other municipalities like clear cut limits, natural feature setbacks and road frontage setbacks. Things that have worked, been successful, um, like Oakland township's a very strict township. And then there's other townships that are more lenient, you know, so to find a balance that would work for independent township. I would be, I will be asking for the board to approve a maximum of $5,000 that towards Dick Carlisle. Uh, actually, it would probably be Megan Mason Minock, who's the representative for Carolina Wardman, who was here during the presentation. Um, we would be asking them to put together a complete outline explaining the entire array of tools available along with several case studies on communities who have active programs that have been successful, so we're not, the amount's low because he's already done a lot of this work. So, it's a lot of stuff, it's a lot of information gathering. We'd be ask him to meet with us possibly periodically and most of the resources we would be utilizing. Brian Ottman in the planning department on stuff that we needed to get instead of Dick. So, he felt that 5,000 will be more than enough if we needed some input from him to be able to get this study group together and make recommendations, um, to the board and the planning commission. Now is a good time to do it with the master plan happening. Um, people that, um, I would like to have in the study group are people that came out to participate in this event. It was advertised on, on Facebook and other places and we did have a pretty full room. Um, some of the people that even most people would know would be like, people like Chelsea O'Brien has said that she would be involved from the Clarkson Family Farm, Jerry Fisher. I'd like to get Susan Julian from Blue Heron, she's a huge asset to us. Uh, maybe if Kristen Wolfang from Oakland County who participated in it, I don't know if she's a resident of the township or not, but either way her input would be valuable if she'd be willing to do it with us. Uh, Brian Ottman, Tom Pytelle from the planning commission. And then, uh, reach out to the community for other people that would want to participate that we could talk to, so it. I talked to Dick about it, he felt that as a study group, we've done them before for the fire departments and other things. It wouldn't need to be a formal thing like the DDA, we would just, you know, it would be a fact finding mission. Um, and a study group similar to probably what you'd want to do with the parks people where you would have the flexibility to have more input if needed. And then, um, you know, basically, uh, we would, uh, you know, and it's, it's, it's going to take time to do this. It's not a one month and come back and be like, let's, you know, implement all these policy changes. But there's a lot of policies out that we talked to at that meeting, like, um, buy, protect and sell. So, you could actually, the township could buy a piece of property, put land conservation easements on it and then resell it so that the easements are in place. That's one mechanism that other communities have used. An open space mileage tied to the park system, um, we got that almost approved in 2008. It was a pretty close vote that when they put that on, up for vote, but during the recession. So, it might be something that's palatable to the residents, I don't know, you know, uh, talking about other park parcels and trying to generate some money. Tying it to the parks is going to, you know, make that more.
You better save some of this, we're going to just have a motion and be done.
More palatable. Well, there's a lot of different tools, um, ways of getting money, ways of getting, you know, property done, you know, all different things. I'm not well versed on, but this is, uh, I think it's, I think it's important and I would, I wanted to let everybody know about it. I would like to try to get it on the next meeting, uh, to get approval to move forward with the study group and then, um, you know, take it from there. So, I don't know how everybody feels about that, but.
Sounds like a, a fairly meaty group and with the things that they can do. I just wonder legally if it should be a committee, a board committee or commission. If we're going to be looking at changing ordinances, spending money, you know, recommend recommending to the board to spend money. An advisory type commit, it should be like a committee. I don't know that, just sounds like there's a lot that they may be capable of doing and recommending that just calling it a study group, I don't know. I think we should look into the legalities of.
Yeah, or maybe.
And the appointment of the people and how we go about that, so.
Inclucrees is a good point, just because you have less than a quarter amount on any committee or advisory doesn't mean you're not violating or potentially violating the open meetings act. So, it can be done and it should be done. The board as a whole, if you're going to make recommendations, have to have all the data that you relied upon, um, or that advisory board, for example. Um, and we want to make sure that that advisory board or subcommittee of this board doesn't exclude or make decisions before it comes back to this board. But it can be done, it's just a safeguard, that's what you're referring to.
So, you're saying that we got to come up with hard names and people and it be an official, uh. And the reason I say that is only because I, I, and Dick's not our attorney, he's just our consultant, but I want, that's exactly what I said was like. And he said, well, if it's a study group, it's, um, and I don't know how then we deliver our findings, you know? So, that's where then it gets into what Carrie's talking about is that you're making, are we making recommendations to the board? And the board makes recommendations to the planning commission or, you know, or if it's the planning.
And talk about it, we'll get the experts here and figure it out.
And maybe you and I can talk about it. It, it's a concern that can be handled, quite frankly. The way you position or set up that subcommittee slash advisory board, it can be done.
Does anybody have any concerns about doing this?
Generally, I didn't hear.
We shouldn't go into discussions on this right now, should we? This is boardman or comments.
Well, I'm just, I, I, and I'm not bringing it to us formally, I'm trying, I'm just saying that I'd like to.
No, they just put it on the agenda.
I was just going to mention at the last safety path meeting there, we had the, uh, the lady from the Blue Heron Conservatory there and, uh, and she brought up some ideas, we talked about, we, you know, buying land and doing different things with it. We're, we're talking about, they have a bunch of land right now, but some of it's even landlocked. So, if we could buy some land to help join it, we could maybe, you know, put trails, like nature trails through, through their property and everything as well. So, that's some of that, some of that methodology you were talking about could be used to, to leverage, you know, not necessarily make a new park, but make trailways, you know, pathways to, uh, through nature to, uh, you know, you know, with, different than a park really, I guess it's, but it's a, it's a nature trail or something, you know, totally different.
You know, and the reason I wanted to bring Dick into it is that they've already done all this for, you know, you can pick and choose which things worked in different communities. That's why it shouldn't be that expensive, but I do think it's time that we take another look at, you know, we're getting, we're rounding up the development. It's, it, the residents were excited about it, you know, and it's one of the biggest issues in the township. So, warrants some, uh, looking into, you know, I think we could have, uh, we made some, we've done, the planning commission did different things that weren't policy that maybe can become to, to soften some of the development and stuff, you know? So, those are just a lot of different ways of looking at it.
I would just suggest, if you haven't talked to SNCAG either, they have a ton of resources for a lot of stuff that communities have already gone through, things like this, and they probably have a lot of information which is free to you.
Right. I will make sure you, you get the information for SNCAG. But, um, Sam, I, I believe that we can meet this week and, you know, you can meet with Dan and, you know, I would like to see it in the next one meeting. We can talk about it. Okay? Okay? That sounds good then?
Yeah.
All right. Any other more comments? No?
Happy Punchkin' Day.
Yeah, thank you for.
I'm going to take one to go if that's okay.
Blue to adjourn.
Second.
Call on fever.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Just one last time, but make sure you close your computers, but don't turn them off. And I will make sure the door is locked and lights are off tonight. And then Carrie will come up and, uh, walk out.
One of you.